Okay, good evening everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the City of Bloomington Township to order. Madam Clerk, if you could please, actually if everybody can stand for the, are we doing the Pledge of Allegiance first? Sorry. Yep, let's go with the Pledge of Allegiance. Sorry.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
For which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please go ahead and call the roll?
Trustee Matthew. Trustee Matthew. Trustee Bolin.
Here.
Trustee Montney.
Here.
Trustee Ime.
Here.
Trustee Becker.
Here.
Trustee Urban. Trustee Urban.
Yeah, I see her. She is. She's here.
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Ward.
Here.
Trustee Crable.
Here.
Trustee Crumpler.
Here.
Trustee Milowambe.
Here. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And is there any item on the consent agenda that anybody would like to have removed? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Council trustee Crable. Second, second by trustee Bolin. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Bolin.
Yes.
Trustee Montney.
Yes.
Trustee Ime.
Yes.
Trustee Becker.
Yes.
Trustee Ward. I. Trustee Crable.
Yes.
Trustee Crumpler.
Yes.
Trustee Milowambe.
Yes. Okay. Oh, okay. Jamie? Okay, well, moved on. So yes, so let's move on to the next item. Thank you. So let the record reflect that trustee Matthew has just joined the Zoom call. Next item on the agenda is regular agenda item A, consideration and action to approve the First Amendment to work fair agreement between 1900 College Avenue LLC and the City of Bloomington Township as recommended by the township supervisor. Is there a, does anybody have any questions? Maybe we should start with discussion first? Okay, doesn't look like there are any questions. Then is there a motion to approve? No motion to approve, no discussion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, motion. Okay, motion by trustee Bolin and second by trustee Ward. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Matthew.
Yes.
Trustee Bolin.
Yes.
Trustee Montney.
Yes.
Trustee Ime.
Yes.
Trustee Becker.
Yes.
Trustee Urban.
Yes.
Trustee Ward. Trustee Crable.
Yes.
Trustee Crumpler.
Yes.
Trustee Milowambe.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is reports by elected officials and we'll start with township supervisor Deb Skirroot.
Hello, everyone. I wanted to report, if you hadn't seen it in the supervisors' report, that we did get our full amount for our local Cures grant monies totaling $17,181.37. That was everything that we had purchased for the PPE equipment and additional supplies related to COVID. So we were pretty pleased about that. I don't really have anything additional. I know I have some questions that I'll be, I'll be responding to trustee Crable on them. So if he would like to address those, I'd be happy to share with you information.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, Deb. So my first question is just, yeah, I was kind of seeing something general here with regard to how much money we've expended for general assistance. I think through January is what it was talking about compared with the amount we had to spend is much larger. And then I went back to 2020, 2021. And, you know, those amounts at this time, we had spent much more for general assistance. And if you can kind of explain why that is and if you think that trend is going to continue or reverse.
Yes, the expenses for 2020 and 2021 were lower in general assistance compared to what was budgeted. And that was obviously because of COVID. And with COVID and the pandemic, we weren't sure, well, in 2020, we didn't know it was going to happen when we were putting the budget together. And then people weren't seeking assistance from us because they were able to get assistance, well, initially, I don't know what happened exactly initially in 2020. I can't remember that far back, but I know that we had had the money available for people, but they were getting, seeking other assistance as well. There's been a lot of unemployment that's come up. And now federal and state assistance through CDBG and other types of funding sources. So really township, if, and I repeat this a lot, but township is the payer of last resort. So once those funds have been exhausted, then we can take over. Of course, in 2021, I mean, 2000, yeah, fiscal year 2021, we were expecting to take over that, that the monies would run out based on the Housing Coalition numbers and input of how many people were going to be needing that assistance. We were on board for all of that. That didn't happen because the funds from CDBG and other sources have still remained intact. They have not been exhausted completely. As far as I know, from the City of Bloomington, we still send referrals to the City of Bloomington for CDBG funds. Our latest response to them, to the City of Bloomington was in February, beginning of February, and they did provide assistance to an individual that we sent over. The other is the LIE HEAP and LIWAP, which is the energy assistance and the water assistance. So that's still in existence. We help when they've exhausted the amounts that they can provide. And then we help through application process. If somebody still can be approved through township, they would be approved. So with all of that, I do anticipate still, and it may not have happened yet, but it will happen, that our numbers will go up. And that's when other sources have been exhausted. Right now, one of the biggest issues is Illinois Department of Employment Security. There is overpayments on a lot of individuals that we're seeing now. And with that overpayment and when somebody's in recruitment status, we're unable, with another government agency, we are unable to serve them. So that is a population of individuals that cannot be served by us with the General Systems Funds.
Thanks, Deb.
Are you talking?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, thank you for that answer, Deb. And then the second thing was in your report, talking about applications being denied because persons had a Class X or a Class 1 drug felony conviction. There being a new state law that removed that eligibility for cash assistance, but it doesn't apply to the townships yet. But the township official of Illinois is trying to change that. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct. It's been initiated by a lot of townships, including me. I've sought, I've written a response to the sponsor of that House Bill 0088 and asked that they make change to the, to the public act. It's now a public act. And that number is 102-0178. With that public act, they've addressed it for TANF. Now, TANF is the cash assistance at the state level. But they did not address it for general assistance, which is what the township code utilizes the information from. So that is Article 6 is township, Article 4 is TANF. And so all that needs to be amended and was suggested through township officials of Illinois, through our township attorney and with the state representative, Ms. Mary Flowers. And so with all of that, I think the change is going to happen pretty soon because they don't want the, in the disparity between all other individuals that are coming out of prison with any other type of felony to be, to receive assistance at a local level, but not the drug, Class X, Class 1. So it will all be a level playing field at some point here in the near future, I hope, because we're seeing still. And I wanted to bring that to your attention. That's why I said there were six that were denied, because this is a discrepancy. And so we do want to get that rectified as soon as possible, so.
Thank you, Deb. I hope that changes as well. That's all I had.
Okay.
Actually, I think you made, had one other question about Phoenix Towers. Did you want me to respond to that?
No, I'll go ahead and get an answer after the meeting. It's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Did you have anything else to add, Deb, aside from those?
I don't believe so. Everything else is in the report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Next is Township Assessor, Steve Scudder.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. We got the numbers back from the state that the county submitted. The four graphs are a breakdown of the residential and commercial parcels that are in the city. We do see not a lot of growth in the, obviously in the size with the parcels and the commercial properties. But we have seen slight growth on the assessed value. We're near halfway to, at $2,888,000,000 right now. And the breakdown is mostly between commercial and residential properties of that total assessed value. There are some other properties that are assessed. Industrial properties and, and those things, farm property. But the, the main sources of EAV are coming from the residential and commercial properties. Do you have any questions on the graphs that were submitted? I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions for Mr. Scudder? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
No.
Okay, no public comments. So at this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by trustee Bolin. Is there a second? Second by trustee Matthew. I see the V sign right there. So madam, well, is all those in favor saying five by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will see you in about 15 minutes.
Okay. Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council. If everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent reflection and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic. One nation, one God, indivisible. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Councilmember Matthew?
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Here.
Councilmember Montney?
Here.
Councilmember Emig?
Here.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Crable?
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Here.
Mayor Malowambe?
Here. The next item on the agenda, from what I understand, actually, before I do that, Corporate Council Jurgens is joining us virtually, correct? Okay, because I'm not seeing him on there, but he's on, okay, awesome. So our next item on the agenda is recognitions and appointments, and I do believe we have a couple. Would you, Madam Clerk, announce those?
We have Barbara Singer to the Connect Transit Board and Anna Panatino for the Planning Commission.
Okay, awesome. All right, well, thank you. I want to thank both of them for their willingness to serve on these boards and commissions, which are very important for us. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Before we move on to public comment, I believe we've got Barbara Singer.
Oh, okay.
Virtually.
Oh, virtually? Oh, okay, I did not see her on there. Okay, awesome. So want to do a little wave, Barbara? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I'm here.
Okay, well, typically, there's not much that we, much else that we do at this moment. It's just a wave and a chance to recognize you and thank you for your willingness to serve. So we definitely appreciate it.
So at this time, we have no email public comment, but we have 11 individuals registered for virtual and in-person public comment.
Okay, sounds good. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order, and their time will be seized. So, Madam Clerk, would you please go ahead and call the first speaker?
I'd like to start with virtual. We have Georgine Chisel. Nobody's on. We don't have anyone who registered to speak virtually online at this time, so we'll start with in-person. Matthew Tosco?
Hello, I'm Matt, and I'm speaking here as a member of the Bloomington Normal Communist Party Club to address the city's plans to install flock license plate reading cameras. Flock license plate reading cameras are a high-cost, low-return kind of bad idea whose potential abuses and unintended-by-the-people uses far outweigh any good that can come from them. Now, after trying to sneak them through as a consent agenda item, I'm glad that there has been actual public discourse and debate surrounding them by the Tech Commission and the PSCRB. Unfortunately and predictably, much of that discourse centered on the police and flock safety, making promises about how the limits of how they're going to be used, how the data is stored, who has access, the need for independent auditing, where the first batch of 10 will be located, et cetera, et cetera. Well, like any police surveillance state technology, there is no way to really ensure those abuses and unintended-by-the-people uses won't happen, especially down the road, once the whole issue falls from the public eye. Contemporary history is rife with examples of the abuse of surveillance technologies at every level of government, and we only know about many of them because of persecuted whistleblowers and diligent public scrutiny investigative reporting. The police surveillance state's MO is one of insidious growth. Sure, a lot of us here are old enough to remember how at first seatbelt laws were a secondary offense. You couldn't be pulled over for them, but if they noticed the seatbelt when you were pulled over for something else, then yeah, you get the ticket. Then we went into the era of random roadblocks, police roadblocks. North Main was a pretty popular place for those. Those had the intent of catching DUIs and seatbelt offenses. And now, you know, 20, 30 years later, there are primary offenses that you can be pulled over for. Drug testing in the workplace was the same way. It started out, hey, just dangerous jobs, just if there's an incidence. Decades later, it's a societal norm for almost any position you want. Sure, it's only 10 cameras right now, with this narrow field of uses that they promise, and they're being equitably placed with much strategic forethought, and they're not, for now. Once that technology is in place, normalized off the public's radar, and just a new normal, it will be exponentially more difficult to stop the expansion of physical units and scope of use. The time to nip this unnecessary expansion of public surveillance in the bud is right now, before it's ever even in place. The City of Urbana set a great example by voting the flock cameras down, and I ask this council to take the people of Bloomington's best interest to heart and likewise not allow them in our communities.
Thank you, Matthew. Next?
Next, we'll have Melissa Newbill.
Good evening, my name is Melissa Newbill, and this is D'Amica Kirkwood. You've probably heard her name in the news. Her son, Trevante, was murdered three years ago, and we just got justice last week. And we are here to say yes to the flock cameras, because had those been installed, it wouldn't have taken us long to find the murders. Lots of man-hours were put on that from the police department, and we appreciate that. However, we also believe that if these cameras were in place, it could help to prevent crime as well. And so, and I've worked in social services for many years, and there have been so many things that these cameras could have helped prevent. We worked at the Salvation Army together, actually, and we used to run off perpetrators that were trying to talk to our women and try to proposition them. And if these cameras were in a place where there are vulnerable populations who reside and gather, we truly believe that crimes could be prevented. And if they do occur, that they could be solved even faster with these cameras in place. And so, we ask you to think about your own loved ones, and if you were to lose someone. And if cameras weren't in place, and no one was there to see the crime happen, but yet someone or someones heard the squealing of tires, these cameras could be used to find those perpetrators, and justice could be received for all those. It is agonizing to have watched the Kirkwood family go through this, and to think that if these cameras were in place, it wouldn't have taken three long years. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Next, we have Gary Lambert.
Good evening, I am Gary Lambert. I watched with considerable attention last week at the budget discussion. I took a couple notes, I don't want to get them wrong. But what I heard was from Mr. Crumpler. He thinks that we ought to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. Thank you. Mr. Becker wants to put more money into roads. Wants to see if there's any savings that we can find that would allow us to do that. And then, Mr. Crable, thank you. He asked the question, could we defer some of that money, if not all, being spent on the Coliseum? Mr. Cothe said that we could defer that expenditure potentially for several years with some additional maintenance. But we didn't know what the payback period would be on the dehumidifier portion. I have one request to make. Before you vote on this, the Coliseum expenditure, ask your constituents, would they rather have that $4 million spent on an unused Coliseum or increased money on the roads? Secondly, at first, it was Leo wasn't. Jason said that we wanted to name an honorary road for Judy Markowitz. Can't think of a age to the City of Bloomington's finances than Judy Markowitz. If in your wisdom you decide that you must have that, I've got a recommendation for you. There's a little street just south of Lafayette. It's called Easy Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next?
Next, we have Monica Springer.
Hello, everyone. My name is Monica Springer, and I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am here tonight because I want to address the mental health crisis in our community and in our city. It's actually a statewide crisis and much more. We have people in our community that are suffering due to lack of resources and services. To be more specific, there is a gap in the comorbidity disorders, even more specifically than that, in mental health illness with developmental delays and autism with no drug or alcohol history whatsoever. I know this firsthand because my son is suffering from autism, epilepsy, and more recently schizophrenia. We have found no services that will meet his criteria. Social workers, the facilities, are not qualified in these specific comorbid dual disorders together. I have reviewed the last Mental Health Action Plan from 2015. I was told this was the most recent McLean County Mental Health Action Plan. I have met with Nicole Kirstein, I believe is how you pronounce her last name, Program Director at Fuse, and Jackie Mathias from Inmate Services as well, the Triage Center, as well as Grace from Chestnut and Andrea Kinzett from LifeSells. There are no services that they can offer in the areas that I've mentioned earlier. The county is proactive in making these changes. Program directors and facilitators are in agreement about the gap being a huge problem within our community. When there is a gap, people fall through. We have a community within our community that's falling in gaps, and their needs aren't being met. A community is only as strong as its weakest service. I've spoken with Grace, as I said earlier, at Chestnut as well, and she addressed the gap in their services too. I heard the words "it's a broken system" a lot in this journey with my son. A broken system equals broken lives. We are responsible, as the stronger ones, to protect the weaker ones. We are the voice for the ones who have no voice. We need to make changes in our community regarding this matter. I believe we should revisit or revise the McLean County Mental Health Action Plan form from 2015. I contacted Randy Martin, I will be attending a county board meeting as well. I've contacted Jason Bergman's office, as well as Sally Turner, there are legislators. I'm taking a community advocacy training class, starting in March, to educate myself and become an advocate for adults with mental health issues and disabilities. I want to be a part of the solution, not just address this issue. I feel like that's how we've gotten into this, how it's gotten to this point currently. Everyone agrees this is a problem. We know better, so we must all do better. I ask you to listen to what I'm saying to you. You have been appointed as our community leaders. In that regard, I am addressing a community crisis to you right now that has been going on for a while. A change needs to be made. People are valuable. We all deserve to have a quality of life. God gives that to us. I have more, but I guess I'm out of time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sure. Who's next?
Next, we have Noah Anderson.
My name is Noah Anderson, and I am deeply concerned about the flock camera proposal. These 10 flock cameras are being sold to the public as a way to assist in high-profile crimes, and they will be contractually obligated not to share our data. It sounds so innocent, right? Well, let us not forget that the police have no real accountability to the public, and time and time again, these automatic license plate readers have failed the public. For instance, in Pasadena, California, they've already violated their contracts because there was no public oversight and sold their data illegally, or shared their data illegally. They're more likely to be used in black and brown communities. In fact, in San Francisco, automatic license plate reader error caused the police to draw weapons on the wrong person. The, there's also cases where unpaid cars and court fees started working, so we use with the automatic license plate readers. I think any attempt to expand surveillance on everyday Americans should be stopped dead in its tracks. I see these 10 flock cameras as a sign of what is to come. If we give them an inch, they will make it a mile, and it might happen rapidly. I call on the town council to stand against any expansion of the surveillance state and to stand up for the personal liberties of everyday working people. And I call on the Bloomington Council to reject the flock camera proposal. That's all I really have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Noah. Next?
Next, we have Scott Steinling.
Scott Steinling, Ward 5. I do have a question regarding the sidewalks, the streets. In this town, they are dangerous. I've seen people just about trip on them. I've seen the the road is washing away. The curbs are in places that are level with the grass. I mean, this is a absolutely time that, you know, we need to focus on the infrastructure. And the city always finds money for everything else, but not for the roads. And if it's not for good roads, the people will leave the city. There goes the tax revenue, and the city cannot control their spending. There's a lot of places in the city that I see fat, but they don't really want to do it. And to be quite honest, it's getting to the point where it's just taking one after the other. And to be quite honest, I would think the city would be very concerned. We've always found money for everything else, but not for the roads, and that is what can, basically, if we have bad roads, people are going to leave the city, and there go the taxes, and the city cannot control their spending.
Thank you, Scott. Next?
Next, we're going to move to virtual. We have Robert Garcia online.
Thank you, my name is Robert Garcia. I'm a resident of Ward 2 in the City of Bloomington.
Thank you. My name is Robert Garcia. I'm a resident of Ward 2 in the city of Bloomington. Last week, I had the pleasure of listening to BPD's presentation to the Public Safety and Community Relations Board. There were a lot of very encouraging promises made in that presentation on the Flock cameras, but it also raised very serious and lingering concerns about the city's readiness to take on such a contract. First, in that meeting, I heard as BPD claimed that the public has nothing to worry about because their picture will never be taken. These cameras are focused on the center of the lane and only take pictures of license plates. The Flock has publicly stated this is not true. Under Washington Post investigation confirmed that, in fact, these cameras are motion censored. So if a person, a cyclist, a pet, or other animal passes by, it will take a picture every time. In a screenshot of the Flock online search portal, it confirms that they take pictures of people, pets, cyclists, cars, et cetera, anything that passes by their motion-censored camera. I'm concerned that what BPD is promising or city officials does not seem to line up with what Flock claims and with what other investigations have already confirmed to be true. The second concern is with the cost. This is a self-renewing contract, so we need to be honest about the long-term cost to the taxpayers who are footing the bill. The first year is $31,500. The recurring annual cost is $27,500. So we're looking at about $142,000 over just a five-year period. BPD wrongly told our city's Public Safety and Community Relations Board last week that these were fixed costs. They had nothing to worry about. There would be no other costs to worry about. They even went so far as to claim, "We don't have to worry about repairs. Flock's going to take care of it." Not true. In the contract, it clearly states there are additional fees for damage, theft, vandalism. There are trip charges. There's even an extra charge for adjusting the angle of the camera. It's in writing in the contract. I urge you to read it. Factor that in, and we're easily talking $150,000 over five years. That's taxpayer money that could be spent fixing our roads, improving our sewage and draining systems, or resolving our homelessness housing needs, especially in the winter when we still have significant gaps in housing that we fail to address every year. Third concern is with the fact that Flock is a young company who has proven to be dishonest. They advertise online that other cities have reported a reduction in crime of over 70%. We knew this claim was impossible, so we asked Flock to provide a list of those cities so we can look at these amazing results they reported. Flock responded with one case study from one city showing it was not a reduction of crime of over 70%. In reality, there was a singular category out of many, many categories that experienced that. In other categories, it was 0%. In fact, most of them, it was 0. And in one, it was 19%. It's clear this young company of only four years in business is willing to lie to our city, to our attorney, to our police department, and to our taxpayers just to get our money. We need to be in business with established reputable firms, will not introduce gross risk and liability into our government and our public domain. There are many other concerns, but that's all I can cover in three minutes. I urge you to postpone this vote. Instead, host a series of public forums so we can continue to address these open concerns. We have recommendations we'd like to introduce that would limit our risk and our liability, and we have not been given an opportunity to introduce those. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Next.
Next, we have Ravi Dervi.
Virtual? Okay. Ravi, are you there? Yeah. Are you is it star six, right through unmute? He's not on the phone? Okay. Yeah, we can come back to him afterwards. So let's go to the next one, and then we'll see if he comes back.
Okay, we'll move to Carla Bailey Smith.
Hi, good evening. I'm a resident of Bloomington in Ward 1. And before you take this vote tonight, I hope that you have given careful consideration that this is evolving technology. And I also hope that you have given consideration to the privacy concerns raised by other citizens. I absolutely want to see a reduction in crime and gun violence. I'm not opposed to the use of cameras. My heart is with Tamika Kirkwood and the loss of her son. I was also anguished and outraged by the lack of evidence to track down what happened to Jelani Day. I understand the need for additional cameras to catch people engaged in criminal activities. I'm also concerned that, you know, once these cameras are placed, assuming that goes forward, that some criminal activities, they might just adjust what they're doing so that they're not inside of the cameras. That is definitely a concern. My other concern is that that you're entering into a contract with a company that really does not have a proven record of crime reduction. And I hope that in the future, city council members will give equal consideration to spending money to prevent crime and address the causes of crime and gun violence, which Alderwoman Molly Ward is proposing that we study gun violence and crime. And we absolutely need to start looking at the root causes of crime and not simply catching people in the act. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Who is next?
Ravi's next, and it looks like his mic is working.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to start by thanking you all for last week's vote to explore how to address gun violence, looking beyond just law enforcement remedies and trying to investigate and address the root causes of violence. I hope we can break down the silos and bring together all the different community groups who've been working to answer these questions for years. That being said, my reason for calling tonight is to speak about the Flock Safety Automated License Plate Readers. I want to thank Chief Simington and Supervisor McQueen for their presentations to the Tech Commission and the PSCRB for answering our questions and for explaining their vision for how these technologies can be used in our community. As a strong advocate for personal and digital privacy rights, I am very resistant to anything that expands surveillance and data collection, especially the wholesale aggregation of personal identifiable data. We are all concerned about public safety, and our hearts go out to those who have experienced terrible tragedies. But we all know what's happened in the not-so-distant past when we let a heightened sense of fear and urgency override logic and cause us to approve and even welcome unchecked, unaccountable pervasive surveillance. I want to be clear. We should ensure that the police have the means to effectively and efficiently solve crime. When used properly, cameras can be a powerful tool to help investigations. The biggest concern that those of us on the Tech Commission had about the drafted policy concerned data governance and transparency. The proposed transparency portal is welcome, as is the review with the PSCRB, but it does not seem there is any mechanism for outside review. There needs to be some method for external impartial review. If the VP of a bank went before the board of directors and said, "Our financials are in great shape, but you have to trust my numbers," somebody would be looking for a new job. Audits in other states have shown that even when there are laws regulating how camera data can be used, there were numerous lapses in data security, retention, and access control. For nothing else, we need to know if there are accidental disclosures or misuse of this kind of data. Another concern is that while BPD states the cameras will be used to solve major crimes, the definition of the policy excludes only traffic enforcement. There's also no prohibition against using the cameras for immigration violations. If we want the public to be reassured that these cameras will not be used to target marginalized communities, that should be reflected in those guiding policies. There are also no provisions on how the policy is to be approved, amended, or canceled. In an interview with WGLT, Flock VP Josh Thomas said that their recommended best practice is to defer to elected officials and have them take charge of policy creation and community outreach. So I'm asking you, our city council, to do that. Ensure that there is a comprehensive audit process detailed in the policy. Be sure that the policy is clear that these cameras will not be used to solve serious crimes and not to harass or intimidate people for minor offenses or violations. Make sure that a robust policy is finalized before you approve any contract for ALPRs or that such a policy is a condition of approval. Transparency and accountability will go a long way in building trust both ways between the people of Bloomington and the police department, and ultimately, that will only make us all safer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ravi. Next.
We have two more individuals, but they aren't present. And it looks like there was a clerical error with the link to join, and we weren't able to get in touch with them. We have Carol Kuz and Georgine Chisel. So we can move on past public comment now.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And is there anything that any member of the council would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Mayor. Sorry. 7D is in David.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 7D?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by motion by Councilmember Bowlin, second by Councilmember Crumpler. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes. Okay, thank you. The consent agenda passes. There are no nays to announce. Next item on the agenda is item 7D, Councilmember Crable.
Thank you, Mayor. What I just wanted to highlight, this agenda item involves the purchase of, I believe, seven police vehicles. Here's a going to be hybrid vehicles that include factory-installed idle reduction technology. Shortly after we got on council, Jen, Julie, and myself brought this issue to the attention of the city after we were reached out to by retired ISU Professor William Rao. And the city, they met with us, Jim Karch at the time. I'm not sure if Kevin was in that meeting. They were positive about it. A study was done, and now we see the fruits of that discussion. So idle reduction technology, IRT, reduces the amount of time an engine spends idling, and it provides services as heat and air conditioning that would otherwise require the main engine to run. And so the staff has determined by testing that we save four cents a gallon. And just think if this was on all of our vehicles eventually. The staff also stated that over 1,000 gallons can be saved per year with a savings of 2,700. And it shouldn't be forgotten that we're helping the environment. Idling for more than 10 seconds uses more fuel and more emissions than starting and stopping the vehicle. An hour of idling uses approximately 1/5 of a gallon and releases nearly four pounds of CO2 into the air. And it also supports our strategic plan of greening the fleet. So just wanted to highlight that, my appreciation to staff, and I move to approve item 7D.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Okay, second by Councilmember Ward. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Hear, hear, yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
And Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The item passes. There are no nays to announce. We're going to move on to the regular agenda. And before we go any further, I just want to call to your attention that there are five items on the regular agenda. So I would ask for everyone, you know, not to limit your freedom of speech, however. Just be cognizant of the time. And really, if you've heard somebody say something, no need to repeat it. And then hopefully, we can you know, we can get out of here in a reasonable amount of time. So just keep that in mind. Thank you. So with that said, I'm going to go to item 8A, which is a presentation by Hartley Community College President, Dr. Keith Cornill, on the college's recent receipt of a $1 million workforce equity initiative grant as requested by the Administration Department. And you should be smiling more.
We're smiling a lot lately.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have that PowerPoint? First of all, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to join you this evening and talk a little bit about this workforce equity initiative. However, and we're very pleased that we received that grant for over $1 million. But this work really started before that, and it worked. The work really began over two years ago, and in large part was due to the efforts that the city and the city council made with regard to supporting individuals to enhance their skill development, to get a job, to get a better job, and then to move into a career. So we're going to talk a little bit about that. First, I wanted to introduce a few people that are with me from the college this evening, and if we could advance the slide. Presenting with me tonight will be Terrence Bond. He's our chief diversity officer at the college and also assistant to the president. We also have with us Josh Crockett, who's a trustee on the board with us. And then Tony Jones, who will be the director of our workforce equity initiative at the college. So he's here to answer all the tough questions should we need it. So again, we want to thank you for it. Again, this project started a couple of years ago with really us all focusing in on increasing the educational and skill attainment of individuals here in downtown and west Bloomington specifically. And I wanted to take just a couple of minutes, if we can go ahead and advance the slide, to share with you how we got to that very targeted community. We, as a college, were looking at ways that we could start to bring programs into the community in order, again, to enhance individuals' educational attainments and skills in order to get a job, better job, and then move themselves to a career. Our district runs from Pontiac down to Lincoln along I-55. What we saw when we started looking at the data, we broke it down by zip codes, and again, we were just looking at educational attainment. What we saw was that in zip code 701, 61701, we started to see something that percolated for us and said that we had an issue with individuals 25 years of age and older that started saying, "This seems to be an identified place of where we could make a difference." We noticed that there were over 6% of the individuals that had less than a high school diploma. We saw that over 59% of the individuals living in that zip code had less than an associate's degree level of education. And the reason that those things are so significant is it's that level of education that really says whether an individual has the skills that they would need for the future jobs, the high-skilled type jobs in our communities. So with that, we started saying, "Okay, what do we know about this area?" So if I could advance the slide, we took a little deeper, closer look at that zip code. We broke it down by tracks, neighborhood tracks, to start to look at educational attainment. And these areas that you can see here are blocked, which are just to the west of downtown, the downtown area, and just to the south. They also had some revealing information for us as opposed to the rest of that zip code area. So if we could advance the slide. What we saw was is that there were, and I want to preface that the census data that we use was from 2018 because of the time we started having the conversation. So that was the reference or the source point for us. But what we saw, that there were just over 1,300 individuals aged 25 or older that were living in these particular neighborhoods. And that 38% of the educational attainment of that area, those individuals had a high school diploma or less. And so in that, then, we saw that even a higher level of high school diploma or equivalent was not yet earned. So that started saying to us that these neighborhoods had the highest need for us to come in as a college and provide types of training and education, which the city has started to support with scholarships for individuals. Starts with us making sure that we have GED programs in this part of our community, which we do now. We increased the amount of ESL education that we We increased the amount of ESL education that we have in this part of the community, which we do have now. And it said we should start putting skilled, short-term, stackable, credential type of education in this part of our community in order to help people move them for, themselves forward. So that's exactly what we've been doing over the past number of years. What I'm going to do now is turn it over to Terrence Bond, who can speak to the issue of how this workforce equity grant that we received is going to allow us to even further develop the types of programs and offerings that we have in the areas that I identify for you. Terrence?
Next slide, please. Maybe one more. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you all for allowing us to come and speak to you today. The Workforce Equity Initiative is a partnership across the Illinois Community College system. And so we are joining a consortium of community colleges and partnering with the Community College Board, as well as the Illinois Legislative Black Caucus, to provide this, these important services. And so this is the third year that the WEI has been funded from the state and providing a goal of increasing, their primary goal is increasing the number of African Americans on a path or in jobs earning 30% above the current area living wage. And so our job is to join with these partner consortium institutions and come up with new approaches that go beyond just our educational programming. And so we're looking at innovative opportunities and ways for us to support our students, to ensure that they're thriving, and to make sure that we are right in part, in the parts of the community that haven't been able to find the educational attainment. Next slide, please. And so these are the major points for our grant. The Heartland has been offered $1,050,000 to be able to begin these efforts. And we're looking at supporting our adult learning community. So people who are either underemployed or unemployed, African Americans, other minority populations, and helping them to go very quickly from not having a certificate, getting them into one of our high-impact training programs and back into the workforce. The services that we're offering, we will be covering the tuition for these certificates, as well as offering a $200 a week stipend. And then working one-on-one, hopefully weekly, with the majority of our participants to ensure that any barriers that they're identifying are being removed. And ultimately ensuring that we're increasing that credential attainment right in the heart of most need. And also, we want to be increasing our Bloomington, West Bloomington collaborations. And so partnerships becomes a huge part of how we do this. We've been working really hard. Tony Jones, our program manager, and I, I'm going out into the community, talking with our community partners, trying to find out what their needs are. And then we'll be also talking with our employee partners, finding out how do we best connect students, people who have, have not been in some of these spaces, and getting them into jobs. And next slide, please. And so what you see here are the numbers that we've identified with our grant. You know, of course, we've been awarded the $1 million. Our maximum number of participants for this year is 145. And our goal is that we get 100 students with certificates by the end of this year. And we're looking at having 70 of, or so of those students earning that 30% above living wage. And the target, a minimum of 60% of those participants will be African-American. Next slide. In order to do that, what we did was looked at, as a community college, the types of programs that our local employers have already said are either in high demand or are, are ones that we're able to move quickly through, and they're high-earning. And so between our advanced manufacturing, and we have building maintenance programs, some EV assembly, our truck driving and welding, these are all programs that our community have said are important, that we get more welders into the community, that we have more truck drivers. And so while we try and meet that demand, we want to do so with the people in our community that, that will benefit mostly. And the same with our healthcare. We want to make sure that we're bringing more certified nursing assistants. We want to have additional opportunities for folks, and as well as a few of our finance and business service programs. And so really, what we're trying to do is, is offer up as many options as we can for people to have some varying degrees of interest as we get started with this very exciting and very high impactful program. And so I'm going to give, back over to Keith.
Thank you, Terrence. If we can advance the slide. The outcomes for us in this program, and not only this particular grant, but in our working relationship with all of you, is how is it that we leverage our resources together? And how do we work in partnership with the city and the various organizations within the city in order to enhance the work skills of individuals, to move them forward in building those individual skills? So again, they can get that job, the better job, and move themselves on to a career. We believe strongly that this type of effort will allow us to increase employment opportunities for individuals, which is a good thing for all of us. But it will also allow us to have the type of trained and, and desired workforce in order to foster growth of existing and new businesses and industries right here in Bloomington. So we thank you very much again for the opportunity to share a little bit about this program, but more importantly, for the partnership that all of you have taken up with all of us in order to move the community forward. So we thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. And I want to give the council an opportunity to, to ask questions. We have about 15 minutes on, on schedule for us to be able to do that. I can't see anybody at this moment, but, okay, here we go. So Councilmember Bowlin has a question.
Yes, I really appreciate the presentation, and I'm very happy that this program and the finances have been provided for you, because I've always pushed for education and training for people in order to better themselves. It's like a handout instead of a handoff, so I really like that. Could you answer what the total is? You received $1 million as a grant. Is there additional money that supports this program?
Yes, through various groups, we are also leveraging the opportunities that they are providing to us in space. So we are at Western Avenue with programs. We are actually using the library for GED programs. We are talking to other agencies with regard to using their facilities. So there's that in kind that is happening. The college is also building out a portion of a property with mid-central community action in order to provide the building, maintenance, property maintenance program. So we're investing several hundred thousand dollars in renovating that space and putting a program right in the community. The idea is for us to try to create those partnerships and leverage whatever we can in the way of resources that we have or others that could bring to the table in order to provide scholarships for individuals to get through those programs. Right now, we started with the city. The city stepped up. It allowed us to get this grant, and now we have interest from some others that we're talking to as well.
And the, the only other question is, is this grant renewable? Because I would like to make sure that this program is sustainable.
So it's a yearly opportunity to, to reapply for the grant if the funds remain available. And so like I said, this is the third year that the grant has been an option, but it is a Illinois state-funded grant. And so we find out somewhere in, in late fall whether or not the grant is open again. And then we have, as a consortium member, I think we, we have a better chance of, of being able to land it for consistent years. And so it really just kind of depends on if the state continues to fund. And I will say that the first two years of the grant have been highly successful with the other consortium members. And so there's a lot of, of strong feelings that we will be able to continue to see this grant operate, and that it'll continue to expand across the community colleges. But there's no guaranteed continuation beyond the one year.
Well, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Emig?
Yes, thank you. Wonderful presentation, Keith and team. I'm really excited about this opportunity. I have two questions. One is, is, first, I'm glad that you're offering a stipend. I wish it could be a little more than 200, but I know it, it's all wrapped up in, in other parts of the initiative, including tuition. But are you expecting to have wraparound services for your students, childcare, other kinds of support mechanisms? And second, do you foresee that if you were to move, have enough occupations identified, but if you were to move into, say, a second year of this, could you see yourselves expanding the kind of education that future students might receive, such as in mental health support? Thanks.
Thank you for the questions. And yes, a part of our, our grant is ensuring that we're offering wraparound support services. We do have special funds beyond the $200 weekly stipend to support childcare during the classes. And so that, we're hoping that that will provide an additional layer of support for working parents. And as it relates to the second question, yes. So for our first year, when we wrote up our grant, we kind of looked at what were the types of programs that we've been hearing are some of the most high-end demand in our community. And so as we go through this year and see what, what programs students are requesting, as well as other programs that community partners are requesting from us, then when we go to request funds for an additional year, we'll absolutely be taking that under consideration.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I, real quickly, you asked about the mental health programs. We have another grant that we just received. We've been really fortunate in the past several months. We've been doing pretty well. But it's, it's a grant specifically for peer recovery specialists. It's a certificate program, short-term certificate program that we have. And so that program is also coming online. As we're talking with individuals, if they fit that program better, then we will put them into that program to be peer recoverers specialists and moving in that area. But we also, to help individuals that may have mental health issues, we have an extensive counseling center on campus, and we have support from Chestnut and others that we leverage in order to help students move forward.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Becker?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'll keep it pretty simple and short. Curious, what is the target wage you had at that 30% above living wage? I wanted to just know where you're at.
We selected 1,750, and so we were using a, I believe, 2019 calculator that said that our, our living wage in Bloomington Normal was somewhere between 13 and 14. And so that may change as years go on, but that was the best available data at the time.
Okay, thank you. And then one kind of question and one observation. I saw, you know, the welding and the construction related. It made me think, and talking to many local businesses, and that, are you tied in with the trade unions and the apprenticeship programs? Are you trying to find ways to unite with that as well, to bring some other, other areas in?
Yes, we work very closely with the trade unions on a variety of different programs at the college. And so we have those tie-ins that would naturally fit in right to this program. So, yeah, the answer is yes, but it's from, you know, a broader perspective, but it does affect these programs as well.
So then the last thing is just a comment, and again, thank you for what you're doing. Workforce development is, is huge for where we want to go as a city, and it's truly necessary. My recommendation is, if you get this successful, and you're deciding on the, you know, the, the waiting in the fall for the next grant opportunity, I think you can go out and raise a million dollars from the businesses if you're providing the right workforce. Don't rely on the grant. Find a way to fund without the grant, just in case. And I do believe there are businesses that will help you. As a matter of fact, I'm positive that there are businesses that will help you.
We thank you for that comment, and we are already doing that. We're already working with and, and leveraging any of those partnerships that we have. This was just a great way for us to really jumpstart things in a very meaningful way.
Great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Urban?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to just thank these gentlemen and for bringing this presentation to us. It's fabulous, wonderful news. The other councilmen successfully asked all of my questions. So I will shamelessly plug that they mentioned collaboration. And so there's Project Oz, there's WB RP, Mount Pisgah Church, and the NAACP. And if you need introductions to these people, I'm more than happy to help you and introduce you so that you can begin collaborating with some of the power forces that help change and shape the growth of Westside. And again, thank you so much for this wonderful news. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much for that, and we are really looking forward to being out in the community and working with partners. And so as you are talking with individuals, please let them know about the program that we're offering. I mean, this is only one of many of the offerings that we have at Heartland Community College. And so while my team is currently working with this small group of, of students, we're always looking for all of our community partners. And so please continue to let people know about our, our college, about the things that we are doing. And we'll absolutely look for ways to help all students.
Thank you. Keith, one more question, a couple of questions for you. So you talked about these programs that are, you know, shorts, you know, certificates are short, stackable. So I was just kind of curious how long, in terms of time, that people have to spend in order to get that certificate? And then what does their, their day look like? Is it a full day, or is it, you know, half a day kind of thing?
So it varies by program with regard to the short-term stackable credentials. But the way to think about them are, is that it gives, it allows someone to obtain a set of skills with a short period of time, a semester or a year, that then is a building block that allows them to go and get a job, but then continue with their education and build upon it into an associate's degree or, or beyond. So those are shorter term. They vary by the various programs. So where there could be some that are nine credit hours, others may be 16, and so on. It just depends on what it is that they're looking at. I think the most of these are all one-year programs that we're looking at in this sequence. But they may have some certificates that are embedded. The thing we want to try to, to help people with is get them a certificate that can allow them to start to work, and then can, they can build on and continue to ladder themselves to where they need to go.
Okay, awesome. And in terms of the day, what does their day look like?
It depends on the program.
And so some of the health programs that we have may be, you know, a four-hour class or a block session. Many of the programs will be, so for our fall starts, we'll have the 16-week rotation. And so there may be two classes that are one and a half hours twice a week. So it's similar to what a, a standard college course would be. And so depending on the, the speed at which a student wants to complete, most of our programs are designed to begin either this summer or this fall, and be done by this fall.
Awesome. Thank you very much. We definitely appreciate not only the presentation, but all the great work that you're doing. And, and we're also happy that we had an opportunity to collaborate with you and to, in getting this off the ground, and look forward to further, you know, collaboration if appropriate. Thank you.
Thank all of you.
Okay. Okay. The, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item 8B. A consideration and action on a resolution approving the FY 2023 John M. Scott Healthcare Trust Grant Award and programmatic agreements in the amount of dollars for category one and category two grants as requested by the Economic Development and Community Development Department. And I don't know if City Manager Gleason has some comments he'd like to make.
Mayor, real quick, I just need to recuse myself from this conversation. Or for the community healthcare clinic.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Oh, City Manager Gleason has some comments first, and I think we have a presentation as well.
Okay, thank you.
We do. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have William Bessler is our grant coordinator for the Economic Community Development Council, part of Melissa Hahn's team. William, I'm going to turn the floor to you to make the opening comments.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Tonight, the John M. Scott Commission will be presenting a record investment for our community. I want to take a brief moment to thank Commission Chairperson Karen Schmidt and Commission Vice Chairperson Karen Stip for their leadership on the commission. I also want to thank all of the commissioners for the many hours of hard work that have brought us here to this moment tonight. A special thank you to our Illinois State University Stevenson Fellow Genevieve Rappel for her work with the commission as well. With that, I will turn it over to the John M. Scott Commission Secretary Kiana Wilkinson to talk more about this critical investment in our community.
Thank you so much, William. So our fiscal year 2023 John M. Scott Trust Grant Recommendations. I'm the secretary as William stated. Next slide, please. So our grant funding process began in September 2021. We had a request for proposal released in that time. And then we opened up our application window from October 1st to November 12, 2021. So the John M. Scott Committee met, I want to say about three times in December with a possible fourth meeting because we just wanted to make sure we were giving the funds to people who really need it, to those health inequities that followed the trust. So that occurred during December 2021 to January, early this year. The John M. Scott Commission approved grant funding recommendations in January 2022. Next slide, please. So our category one general operating grants were $250,000 plus the category two category, or sorry, capital improvement grants were $177,923.86. And then our category two program grants, which are about $500,782.3 with our total investment in our community totaling 929,705.89. Next slide, please. So some additional information to take in. 22.49% increase in funding from this fiscal year 2022 to fiscal year 2023. So total funding request and applications was 1.5 million close to. And we only were able to meet about 63% of this funding. So that just shows a substantial need in our community for more funding to help us. There's a larger funding capability due to higher levels of return from the trust, and that was very, very good to hear. So we can continue giving back. And there was no impact in the City General's Fund, which was good. Next slide, please. So meeting our community needs, grants such like these that are funded, they help fund activities that address all three priorities in our Community Health Improvement Plan, which include access to care, healthy eating, active living, behavioral, which include mental health and substance abuse. And investing in these health and healthcare reduces long-term costs and lifts our communities overall well-being, our mental health. This funding and John M. Scott spirit fills critical gaps and serves under-resourced community members, helps those health inequities that happen in our community currently right now. So organizations funded focus on the social determinants of health, which include mental health, which include therapy, help for physical disabilities, senior care, community healthcare clinics. We helped a lot of people. Next slide, please. So thank you for listening to me. I hope you consider just approving this proposal. This is excellent work done by a lot of professionals with the help of William. We just appreciate all your your time and thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you, Kiana. Are there any questions? From Councilman? Okay, I see one, two, three. So let's go with Councilmember Urban and then Councilmember Bolin and Councilmember Emig.
I actually don't have any questions. So I think it's a malfunction in my computer.
Oh, you have to put your hand down.
All right, well, well. Well, okay, yeah. Okay, okay, it's down now. So we'll we'll go with Councilmember Bolin and then Councilmember Emig.
I only have one question, and that is can you identify the capital projects? I know that one is with Project Oz and the other one is for another category.
Yes, of course. All right, William, I'm okay with. So some other category two program grants that we funded. So the West Bloomington Revitalization Project, so Project Oz, like you mentioned, OSF Healthcare System with piecemeals, Center for Youth Family Solutions, we've got the Community Healthcare Clinic, Center for Human Services. I've got more if you want to hear more.
Well, I was just interested. I think there was two capital improvements. So what are those two?
Those two, so the Community Healthcare Clinic and the Center for Human Services.
Okay, and and that's for expansion of the building or?
So the Community Healthcare Clinic was funding to help with low-income patients that do come to the clinic for just testing, just things they can't get with their normal insurance. Okay, as well as we take the insurance too. But yeah, just give you those extra services for low inequities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Emig.
Yeah, I'll be quick too. I'm thinking for your service, William and Kiana. It's truly tremendous. And I've got John M. Scott's old books right across from me right now that I'm looking at for inspiration to try to to match anywhere near, anywhere near what he did. But my question is, is given your unique purview of seeing all of these applications come in from the community writ large, could you generalize, did you notice a trend in need? Was there a particular kind of thing that kept coming up? And I know the grant is limited, but I'm interested in that. Thank you.
Yes, of course, of course. Definitely mental health. There is a huge need for mental health care. There's a huge need for, I would say, LGBTQ, like, just those are the people that actually need it. And I feel that during our meetings and going over the grants, we tackled that. We listened to it and mental health kept coming up over and over again. I feel like with mental health, you can help with your physical health. And overall, you just are a better person. So that is something that I wish we could have funded more, but we had to prioritize mental health. People asking for funding for mental health programs. But overall, I feel like we did a really good job in just meeting the need of everybody that was asking.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bolin. Is there a second? Okay, second by Councilmember Emig. Madam Clerk. Please call the rule.
Councilmember Bolin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
I have to recuse. I'm a WB RP Board Member.
Okay, Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Craybill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't pass. There are no names to announce. So next item on the agenda is a presentation of the FY 2023 budget update as requested by Finance Department. And this is only a presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason for some introductory comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will be very brief. This is part two of the presentation that occurred with some of our department directors last week at Committee of the Whole. One comment that we heard last week, and it was a to-do item for me, was to report back on capacity for road work in the community. And I'm going to cover some initial additional information under City Manager comments, but not under the presentation by Finance Director Scott Rathbun. Scott?
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Council. Yes, this is really our second major or complete update for council and the public. Last week, at Committee of the Whole, I spent a great deal of time on the projects that are incorporated in tonight's presentation, trying to put some some real tangible feel to these large numbers that we're discussing. We try to present the information in incremental, you know, advancement each each time we come before you. So tonight, we'll be adding the citywide comparisons year to year for revenue expenditures. And before I launch into that, though, I wanted to spend a couple of minutes, keep it brief, though, talking about our financial structure. We have 29 funds. So we generally give a lot of time and attention to the general fund. It's our largest fund. It's funded mostly by taxes, so it's economically impacted. It funds, you know, the public safety, police, fire, parks, things of that nature that don't have direct fees like our enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are business-type activity funds. They're supposed to stand on their own feet. Water, sewer, storm, solid waste, those are primary examples. The arena golf are also enterprise funds. Then we have a category for special revenue funds. The library, state motor fuel tax, the Bloomington Election Commission. These are the types of funds that fall under this category. They have very restricted revenue sources that drive that activity while they're part of the city structure. Sometimes the city, in a way, doesn't have complete control over those. So we have variations within our budget related to the activity of those funds. So that's kind of where I'm going with this. I want to really emphasize this year some of the variability in our budget, emphasizing that, you know, we do, I think, a strong cost control culture here. We try to find efficiencies in everything that we do, constantly reviewing our financial structure, like for bond refinances and always looking for ways to save the public's cash. And so we can utilize those funds for the best possible services. Another special revenue fund I want to mention, which kind of correlates well with the presentation we just had, you know, is our CDBG and IDA funds. Those are based on expectations for grants. So they're completely grant-funded. They can drive our budgetary variances year over year. In a moment, I'll highlight that again. And then, of course, the J M Scott, which is a fiduciary fund. It's driven by the the trust assets and the market increases. So they have an increase. Fortunately, they're going to be able to provide more services. The city is really just a trustee for that fund, so it's part of our financial structure. But again, it can increase our our budget and really not be an indication that we're growing government. And we're still, you know, still just want to emphasize we're utilizing those dollars for the best, for the best possible means. So next slide, please. So there's, there has been no material changes since our first presentation in January. Just so I'll briefly run through the same exhibits from before. Citywide budget, 269 million, up 17.4. The general fund, 122.3, up 13.2. With the general fund, you know, American Rescue Plan Act, we're referring to that commonly as ARPA funds. You know, there's a $5.6 million placeholder in that. We do have some compensation increases in the general fund, mostly related to IT. But really, there are a little over $12 million in non-recurring items that are driving some of our increase. ARPA, the library has dollars in 2023 related to their expansion for furniture and equipment. That's over 2 million. I mentioned CDBG and IDA, those funds, they're budgeted $1 million over 2022. So that's driving our budget variance as well. The Bloomington Election Commission, which has its own funding source, really, that comes from the county via the property taxes, that budget is up 600,000. So that, all those together make up $12.4 million of our non-recurring related to the $17 million overall city increase. Capital projects, almost 57 million, spent a great deal of time on that last Monday. That's a very significant number. It's over 20% of the total citywide budget. Very aggressive, I think, projects scheduled for next year to improve the services for the city. And the general fund, fund balance. These are the reserves, $32 million. We're very fortunate. We had a very good 2021 with some of the grant revenues that came in, sales tax revenues, everything trending very nicely. So we're projecting a $32 million fund, fund balance, or otherwise otherwise known as reserves for the general fund. And then cash for equipment, 6.3 million citywide, 4.9 million for the general fund, 100% cash for equipment for 2023, no borrowing, which was a council initiative from several years ago. So we're a couple of years ahead of schedule on that, trying to take advantage of some surpluses that we've gotten. So once again, just trying to emphasize constantly looking at the most efficient and best way to utilize the funds of the city to have an impact going forward. Next slide, please. So I've kind of referenced the budgetary growth. This is an exhibit that we we've put into place last time. We start with our total citywide budget. You know, you can see a significant, what appears to be growth from 2016 to 2023. But then we're we're kind of backing out or adjusting for some items that are variable like capital projects that can roll from year to year. We have accumulation of reserves to execute projects in the most efficient manner possible. And then we have strategic additions related to homeoral sales tax for mental health, utility tax for pensions. And then we have this non-recurring. And I'm going, we're going to update this to show the 12.4. It's actually a little over $12.4 million next month. But when we first did this exhibit, we really wanted to show kind of the higher profile American Rescue Plan Act and Library non-recurring items. So we've added a line below that table that shows the actuals. And we include encumbrances, and that's kind of a funny term, but it just really means items that have been approved by council. We have purchase orders in place. There are commitments. So from a budgetary standpoint, you know, we say we're kind of cash from a budgetary standpoint, but we also, we put those encumbrances in because those are commitments. So just highlighting a couple of years, I'll start with 2020. We had $227.5 million total budget. We only spent 193.6 or committed. That's about a $34 million difference. $24 million of that was related to capital projects that got deferred to the next year. And then 2021, 230.3 million in total, 198.9, that's a $31 million difference. And $22 million of that was related to capital projects that got deferred. As we found out last week, you know, the motor fuel tax fund with some of those large Hamilton, Fox Creek, those projects, very substantial. When they get bumped, the project totals really roll out to the next year in very significant fashion. The box there you can see in the middle, really, these numbers show us that we've grown at about a 2% to 3% annualized rate for the last seven years. Next slide, please. Major tax revenues, this is a recurring exhibit. We utilize this in the monthly financial report as well. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but the key takeaway was we're fortunate that we have about $5 million in new revenues related to online cannabis, or excuse me, online. The local component of online retail sales, excuse me, the cannabis dispensary streaming. So after adjusting for that and the levy increase related to the library specifically, we're really looking at about a 1.7% growth rate over 2021, which was really kind of more of a base year pre-COVID versus the 2022. That's why we're showing kind of a very significant increase, but adjusting for what we took the budget down in 2022 from 2021, and those new revenues, about a 1.7% increase. Next slide, please. General fund revenues, same, no material changes here from from last month. Tax line, I just want to highlight, we're showing a $6.5 million increase from prior year. The previous exhibit showed 13.2 million. Not all those taxes are related to the general fund. Intergovernmental revenue, 6.7 million dollar increase. The most material driver of that increase is the $5.6 million related to the American Rescue Plan Act. We have it in as a placeholder. Looking to receive that in, I'd say, early summer around May or June timeframe. Next slide, please. General fund expenditures, no material changes here as well. Of the 13.2 million dollar total, a little over 3 million is related to salaries and benefits. You can see the the notes there. We have, you know, about a 2.5% increase, cost of living increase for what we refer to as classified employees. The unions are, are subject to the contractual obligations there. And then we have significant, I'll call it significant increases in health insurance, 6%. And then additions of, of some staff primarily related to IT, driving the rest of it. And then capital expenditures, 4.8 million dollar increase, paying cash for equipment. If, if you kind of look down to the next two lines where you see principal expense and interest expense, the 2023 proposed, the one point roughly 8 million and 143,000. That's really kind of the, the doubling up impact because we have that residual leases, you know, for the 1.8 million, 143. So I'll just going to call that $2 million duplication because we're paying, paying cash for equipment. I explained that, I think in greater detail last month, but since we've made that switch over, we're, we're having this kind of duplication year over year. And then other expenditures, $5 million up, increase over prior year. The main driver is the American Rescue Plan Act placeholder we have in place there. Next slide please. So now we get into the citywide exhibits. Again, the citywide, you know, that's made up the 29 funds. There's a lot of driving factors pushing these numbers around, but to highlight a few, use of fund balance. We show a balanced budget. So when we're using fund balance or reserves, we show that as a revenue source. It's not a current year revenue source, but this is how we show, we've historically shown our budget for the city of Bloomington. If you, if we did not show that, we would be showing a net loss basically of the year of $33 million. So that's just, you know, from a visual standpoint and interpretation of the exhibit, I just want to keep highlighting that. So the community understands how we do things here. In the notes section, you can see that 19.4 million dollars of that is related to those more state motor fuel tax projects that the Fox Creek and Hampton wrote. So that, that's a, that's a significant number that has been rolling from year to year. Taxes, this shows 14.1 million dollar increase. We just went through the major tax exhibit of 13 plus million. Not all taxes are reflected on that exhibit. So that's why there's a difference there. Intergovernmental revenue went up by 8.4 million. Again, American Rescue Plan Act dollars driving a significant amount on that light item. Charges for services, increases in sewer storm, solid waste, 3% annualized increase that the council approved a few years back. A miscellaneous revenue. This is a category I've just mentioned that with the budget, it's primarily a cash accounting, financial reporting structure, other than including those encumbrances. So miscellaneous revenue is where we show borrowings. So sources of funds from borrowing last or this year, excuse me, for 2022, we had 11.7 million dollars for borrowing for the pool. And that's not in FY23. So that's pushing that number down significantly. And then finally, I wanted to highlight the transfer in. There's, there's transfers between funds and these get reflected on our budgetary financials. And I wanted to highlight that this has the effect of, of grossing up our budget. So with the library, they, they, we approved a levy with an increase of $850,000 for debt service to fund the library expansion and remodeling. So they, they've increased their levy by 850,000. We have to do the bond at the city on, at the city level according to bond council. So the library will be reflecting revenue and then a transfer out expense to the city. The city will be showing a transfer in revenue from the library and then expenses related to the bond debt service on its books. So an $850,000 transaction like that becomes a 1.7 million dollar impact on our budget. So it's not a, a growth in the government. It's, it's just a functionality of the way we have to do the, the inter-fund transfers. Next slide please. Expenditures, you can see that salaries and benefits, these numbers were primarily reflect, reflect the increases we just went through for the general fund. Commodities up 2.8 million. Everyone's familiar with the supply chain issues and inflation. So trying to capture some of those increases there. Other expenditures, $10 million up, 6.7 million of that is American Rescue Plan expenditure. Then we have some contributions to fund balance for, for some of the enterprise funds. And then finally, the transfer out, this, this is the exact same number we just went through on the transfer in. So this will be the transfer out at the library level. So this, the 850,000 of this million 70 is related to the library. Next slide please. So we can't show all 29 funds on one exhibit. So we've, we've bundled some together by like category, the bond funds, all other funds at the bottom here. But this, this highlights the ups and downs related to the, the 29 funds in this, within the city. So we've gone through the general fund, motor fuel tax. This is state motor fuel tax, primarily motor fuel tax, the capital funds, water, sewer, storm. A lot of these are just related to changes year over year for capital projects. So I wanted to highlight, you know, specifically the capital funds, how it's down by 10.9 million. That's related to O'Neil Pool being in the capital improvement fund for 2022. And then I want to skip down to all other funds, you know, a 2.3 million dollar increase. Well, in all other funds, it's a CDBG. We don't have IDA written in the notes, but CDBG and IDA, which that budget went up by a million dollars due to those grant expectations. So this is driving our budget up. But if we get those grants, then it's obviously going to increase. The programs are available there. $550,000 increase from the Bloomington Election Commission budget, you know, separate board, but it's within the city's financial structure, driving our budget up by 550,000, but with its own revenue source. And then the insurance internal service funds, 1.6 million dollar increase. Premiums have gone up, health insurance, et cetera. From a financial structure, accounting standard standpoint, we have to have an internal service fund for insurance. It, it's, it's a little bit of an interesting setup, but we basically pay for our insurance out of these funds. And then the departments are charged their proportional piece of that. So it's again, kind of reflective of this inter-fund activity where it doubles up. When we have an increase in insurance, it really has a doubling impact on our overall funds or, or overall budget, excuse me. Next slide please. The capital projects, I'm going to move through, through these quickly. We spent a lot of time on them last Monday, but I just wanted to encourage the public, if they did, were not able to watch last week's presentation, to watch that recording. There's a lot of information there related to the need around these projects and some of the, I guess complexities of them as well. So almost $57 million in, in capital projects. These will be in, when we issued the budget books, there'd be detail sheets on each one of these projects with, with pictures and maps showing, you know, where they're located, et cetera. So I wanted to highlight that before we kind of run through the list. Next slide please. So not going to run through lists these individually. These are really primarily examples of taking care of what we have. All these are structural improvements or repairs to existing facilities for the city. Next slide. The list here is, is the same, but this is a mix of maintenance and, and addition. So the Sweeney Park Playground and amenities, that, that's a new capital project, but the rest of these are really related to repairs and improvements on properties that we already have. Next slide please. The mo, the state motor fuel tax. So this is funded by, funded by our share of the state motor fuel tax. It was 19 cents. It's 38 cents now. So you can see that the significant dollars here, these are all really primary related to two main projects, but I don't have the total here, but it's multiple. It's got to be $19 million. That's what we're using fund balance. So right around there for the state motor fuel tax, actually was on the prime, previous page. 25.2 million dollars for state motor fuel tax. Next slide please. Basically our public works, capital improvements, just want to highlight, you know, the, the section at the bottom refers to our streets and sidewalks. It totals $7 million. The city manager Gleason mentioned at the start of the presentation, he will be making some references to that during his segment of the meeting. Next slide please. And all of these other projects are really related to the enterprise funds, storm, water and sewer, Locust Colton improvements highlighted specifically throughout, but just a, a lot of projects, a public works has scheduled for the year, a very aggressive, I think, schedule. And hopefully, you know, we can execute on all of these, but you know, sometimes there's things that, that occur that are outside the control of the city. And go to next slide and next slide. Remaining FY23 schedule. So I'm, I'm hoping that the way we progress through the, the presentation is help, helping the community understand, you know, the structure of the city. I would encourage anyone that is really interested in understanding some of the interactions between the funds. I'm jumping to the bottom here to watch, view the, the budget 101 video series. On March 14th, we'll be presenting the proposed budget to council by, by code. We have to officially present a proposed budget by March 15th of every year. At that meeting, we'll be showing some utter, other tangible activity related to dollars at work. You know, there's multiple thousands of service calls, the police and fire go on every year. Trash recycling, 48 million pounds, the, the, the previous exhibit that we put on this. So I'm trying to, trying to put some reality to these large numbers and what's being provided to the community. So we'll be highlighting that at the proposed budget presentation, March 14th. And then we have the 28th budget public hearing and the final adoption on April 11th. So that, that concludes tonight's update. So I will take any questions or comments at this point.
Okay. Wait for the, all right. Any, any questions from council members? Okay. It seems like it was all crystal clear. Oh, okay. Sorry. I didn't see him.
Sorry, Mayor.
I got excited for a second.
I just had one quick question. You mentioned in the comments, Scott, that there was a $535,000 increase for the Bloomington Election Commission. And that was the first time I've heard that in these presentations. Can you give me any information of what's going on there?
Well, they, I, I don't have the details in front of me now, but they periodically need additional hardware for the voting machines, et cetera. You know, that, as I mentioned, they, they have their own dedicated revenue source. It's really a property tax share from the county. So they have an independent board, but they're reviewing their entire setup, location, et cetera. So I think a lot of that is equipment related. And then we have the elections this coming fall. So I think part of it was also related to the, their temporary judges that they need for the year as well.
Okay. So they're, you, they're set up mostly like the library where it passes through our budget, even though they have their own revenue source?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Scott, for your presentation. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a presentation of the Police Department Strategic Plan 2022 to 2024, as requested by the Police Department. And again, this is a presentation only, and I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason for introductory comments, if any.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of opening comments. Very excited about this. This is going to be Chief Simmington's very first strategic plan that he shares. Hopefully the first of many. And Chief, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason, Mayor. And on behalf of the men and women of the Bloomington Police Department, we are excited for the strategic plan and for what's to come for the city of Bloomington as we strive to work with the community to make this a safe place to live, work, play, worship, and receive education. Next slide. It is the mission of the Bloomington Police Department to work in partnership with the community, members of this city to enforce the laws and enhance the quality of life in the city of Bloomington. BPD leadership worked in concert to set the overall goals for the Police Department and develop a plan to achieve them from this year through 2024. Next please. The strategic plan rests on each of the pillars of the 21st century policing initiatives, which was established in May of 2016. And it provides a guide for law enforcement in advancing community policing and its strategies. Pillar one is building trust. Pillar two, policy and oversight. Pillar three, technology and innovation. Pillar four, community policing and crime reduction. Pillar five, professionalism and training. And pillar six, strengthening our workforce. We established four goals to go in concert with that. That is to reduce crime and the fear of crime, improve the quality of life in neighborhoods, maintain advances in law enforcement technology, and strengthen and diversify our workforce. The overarching question of our leadership team is how does the Bloomington Police Department go from good to great in every facet of our mission? Our team is excited and dedicated to do our part to strive for continuous improvement in leveraging best practices in its exploration in the process. I will highlight the goals and make a few remarks as I navigate through the slides. Next please. Goal number one, reduce crime and the fear of crime. The city of Bloomington and everyone who lives, works, handles business here certainly expects that the Police Department is capable of preventing crime. And we're not able to prevent, hold those responsible that carry out crime in the city. Each 911 call, we respond to each problem that we, we're presented with from members of the community. The expectation is that we solve the problem. And we strive to do so and do a fairer job of carrying that out on a daily basis. Strategy number one for reducing crime and the fear of crimes to, to develop a problem oriented policing project sites based on geographic regions with a great, that have a greater number of crimes, calls for service disorder events and a higher than average risk of victimization. Individual officers and teams of officers will apply a variety of resources and techniques to deter, reduce, and eliminate criminal activity. This is an ongoing task and one that we take serious as we carry out our mission. Along with enforcement is the important component of crime preventive strategies and education. Also maintaining a transparency portal, which will encourage, will also encourage a see something, say something philosophy that will go hand in hand with our objectives. The next slide. Strategy number two is to work to reduce juvenile crimes across the city by closely, my apologies, by working closely with the community-based delinquency projects and engage intervention-based youth programs and focus on violent habitual offenders. We strive to identify at-risk youth and work with local youth intervention programs to provide a coordinated approach to further reduce youth offending. Our school resource officers do a remarkable job in mentoring and providing a resource for children as well as deterring crime. We also have a desire to develop a summer youth program to work in partnership with other public safety agencies and extend a, a hand of cooperation with many others in the community as we certainly strive to work together and utilize our resources and personnel in carrying out those ventures. Next slide. Goal number two, improve the quality of life in neighborhoods. Strategy number one is, is focused on traffic enforcement. It's driving conditions and improving overall road safety in the city of Bloomington. We will be able to make positive change through the four E's of road safety, education, enforcement, engineering, and emergency services. We will continue to launch public relation campaigns that will focus on prevention, policing and mitigation of speeding and crashes in the city of Bloomington. We have also enhanced our crash and traffic enforcement data through the use of the department's transparency portal. And the city of Bloomington Police Department does well, especially when compared to other cities with And the city of Bloomington Police Department does well, especially when compared to other cities with the DUI enforcement, which has a direct effect on saving lives and reducing injury. Next slide. Strategy number three, engage community members and community groups from neighborhoods, which are disproportionately affected by crime, by forming problem-solving partnerships. I will hold quarterly meetings with my senior leadership staff and reach out to other city departments in the process as we work to address neighborhood issues. Increase community engagement, which we've made successful strides in doing under my leadership. And we look forward to continuing and expanding upon that. Publicize the beneficial outcomes and images of positive trust-building contacts that we're making via social media and news releases. This will be a continuous, as is the the entire strategic plan evaluation, and we do certainly look at this as a living document. Developing a citizens' police academy to educate the public, as well as the elected on departmental operations approaches, strategies, and those issues that we deal with on a daily basis as to be informational or a source of information for the public. Our next goal, next slide, please. Maintain advances in law enforcement technology. Our strategy is to review the varieties of technology used both internally and externally to stay current with advancements to ensure we are serving the public most effectively and efficiently. We are outfitting every police officer with a body worn camera. And we will continue to evaluate and hopefully procure with the city council's permission, the license plate reader technology to enhance our criminal investigative strategies and outcomes. We look to expand mobile devices to the patrol division, which will be instrumental in them carrying out a variety of investigative techniques in the field, most effectively and efficiently. And to also expand the public safety camera systems to the east side, especially our high-traffic, high-accident corridors and intersections. Next slide. Goal number four is to strengthen and diversify our workforce. The strategy, maintain a high level of public trust, demonstrate mutual respect, enhance departmental professionalism, and increase the departmental diversity and transparency. We're continuing to evaluate our capabilities of increasing diversity within the Police Department and ensuring equity and inclusion. We will create a transparency portal for the community to have a direct view of how we're doing in our recruitment efforts. We have initiated a thirty-by-thirty pledge where the department will strive to onboard thirty percent of its sworn personnel at a number of thirty percent by twenty thirty. We are currently below six percent in that category. Actually, we're at five percent as of today in that category. And there's substantial opportunity for growth there. We will continue to provide the best training for our officers, including the escalation training, and stay current with the requirements of the Illinois law. And we'll be assertive with in working with the Public Safety Community Relations Board. That concludes the presentation. If there are any questions, I can take those.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief Simmington. Council, any questions? Sure, Councilmember Ward.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate getting a better sense of of your perspective on where things should be going in the city as far as the Police Department goes. My primary question has to do with how these, this strategic plan was developed and in terms of what kind of community involvement there was in developing the plan that you've you've proposed. I I really appreciate the the efforts that it seems like you're wanting to go to in terms of engaging the community moving forward. I'm I'm wanting to know, where was the community input in creating this?
That that is a very good question. We built the the plan internally from the the previous plan under maybe two administrations ago. There was a gap and there was no plan in place. We have attempted to present that to the Public Safety Community Relations Board. Unfortunately, the they did not have enough members to have an official meeting when we were to provide that presentation to them for input. The document is a growing, living document and is certainly subject to change on our capabilities of 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 being responsible to the community and and being receptive and cognizant of where the plan needs to grow. But we needed a plan to have something in place to build upon the strategies. And it is attached, again, to the Twenty-First Century policing model, which is a nationally accepted model with input from a variety of of experts in the field. So as as it stands now, it's it's a it's a good starting point.
I appreciate that. I I just can't underscore enough. I think that it's essential in terms of building trust and getting buy-in from people moving forward to have have that input from folks. And I was intrigued by your your idea of the Citizens Academy. And I was hoping that 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 could be a two-way street for education. It it sounds right now like it's primarily focused on providing information to the public. I'd encourage that it it be a two-way street and an opportunity to receive information as well. And as maybe a starting point for that and as a nod to to really engaging groups that have been disaffected, I'd encourage shifting the the name of that to maybe Residence Academy instead of Citizens Academy.
Understood. Thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you. So it looks like we have, I'm gonna go from left to right, Councilmember Mathie, Councilmember Crumpler, and then Councilmember Bowlin.
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, thanks for the presentation. Really appreciate it. One of the line items in there, you mentioned quarterly meetings. And I I wasn't sure if those were internal meetings or if you were going to resume. We used to have a practice where the chief would have quarterly meetings in the Osborne Room where residents could come and just he could say, here's what we're working on, and he could get a little feedback from residents at the same time. And that's been, it's been asked a lot of me if we're gonna resume those. I obviously understand we've been under some weird COVID lifestyle changes. But i- is that what you were intending, or was it something else there?
Yes, sir. That is, that is definitely the intent. We have, we've also had numerous coffee with the cop community events as well. Some have been well-attended, others have not. But I will have quarterly meetings and invite the public to to come in and engage with myself and and the senior staff throughout the year.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Chief, I also really appreciate the presentation this evening. I was I was struck by in your introduction in the document, a commitment to a continuous improvement, which is something I I think is easy to talk about and much needed, and I really appreciated that. I wondered, you know, I I really like the ambitiousness of this plan. And I wondered if you think you may need to hire additional officers or other personnel as you move forward, you know, to make this plan a reality.
Yes, sir. That is a very good question. As as we said today, we are approximately eleven officers short. That does not include three others that are that are on the bench due to workers' comp-related matters. We we hope to strive to onboard at least eleven more and to get us closer to our number of one hundred and twenty-eight. We could do some remarkable things if we're able to get there, and we're striving every day to to recruit as as has been a challenging or challenging for the industry for for us to recruit police officers. But that is definitely a significant component of of building our workforce.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Councilmember Bowlin?
Yeah, thanks, Chief, for the information. I read through the entire thing, and I'm very impressed with the the plan and if if you follow through on all of it, I think that'll be great. I only have one question. Is, are there police officers serving on the Law and Justice Coordinating Council? Because I know that that council provides, well, it provides initiatives or pushes for initiatives for at-risk youths and and all that type of thing. So I was wondering if you're involved in that at all?
Yes, ma'am. We we are involved in that. We attend the meetings on a regular basis, and we are engaged with that that committee.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Mayor, whenever I have.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Cribble.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for what you and all your your department does to keep us safe. And that thanks also comes from my constituents, so representing them as well. And I really like the the strategic plan. I had a couple of questions and then a then a request. So the first thing, I I note that part of the plan references the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that made me think of a conversation we've had before with regard to
Jeff, I apologize. Could you bring, pull the microphone a little closer? I can barely hear you.
Do I need to repeat everything?
Yep. Not all of it.
Okay. Yeah, I to repeat, thank you for everything that you and the department does to keep us safe. Couple of questions and a request. You referenced diversity, equity, and inclusion as as part of the plan. And it and it made me think of a conversation that we had with regard to the connection between poverty and crime. Would you discuss that and and, you know, how you see that relating to the goals of the department?
Yes, sir. No problem. So I'm, of course, African-American. I grew up in a second-poorest community here in Illinois. I witnessed poverty. I was a part of poverty, as well as my my family, immediate family and extended family. And all of us made it out of poverty. And it is certainly a blessing having a family that worked hard to make sure we have opportunity, having a church foundation. You know, reflecting on an African proverb, it takes a whole village to raise to raise a child. And witnessing what is occurring here in the city of Bloomington, I am very impressed because it allows those that are in those impoverished homes and communities, parts of our community, to have resources. And education is certainly very good here. And it opened doors for me throughout throughout my life. And having a safety net, others that are there to mentor and care and provide guidance makes a significant difference. So not everyone who lives in poverty is subject to making decisions to involve themselves in crime. That is, that is a decision. And fortunately for me, my my brothers, sisters, my cousins, we chose not to. A lot of close friends and a lot of success came from that. But there are some some that feel they don't have any other other choices or options to survive. Others may may just make bad decisions. But I've I've also seen some wealthy folks involve themselves in crime as well. So is there a correlation? Studies will will say, yes, there's there's a correlation. But there's also a correlation to how you overcome that and become successful. And I hope that that answers your your questions.
I appreciate that thorough answer. My second question would be, you talked about one of the goals with regard to making our streets safer. And and you said it it dealt with a number of things, including engineering. And one of the things that I've talked about before is the design of a street, you know, lends itself to a certain speed, right? And what some people call road diets, maybe making a street narrower, helps naturally reduce the speed of vehicle of a vehicle. Do you believe that's a solution as well as as enforcement of the traffic laws?
Yes, I am, I do not pretend to be an engineer, for sure. But understanding that the roads that we currently traverse today were not built for the number of vehicles that travel through them, the design of vehicles, the weight of the vehicles, and then foot traffic, more cyclists, things of that nature. We expect our roadways to accommodate in a safe manner. I think any any step towards, and you know, the studies show, some studies show that it it does have a positive impact on on vehicle safety and the user safety of the roadways. And it's a best practice, a continuous improvement strategy that that we should look at as a as a combined effort, community or engineers that work for the city of Bloomington and the Police Department. So certainly, I think we should, we should be open-minded when it comes to that.
Great. And and yeah, so I think, you know, working, if if you see an issue with, you know, people just traveling too fast, and you think it's an issue with the road that could be changed, that you work with, you know, public works, let them know, right, that that, you know, communication back and forth.
Yes, that will definitely take a a team effort and coupled with the education and the proper enforcement.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
And and just a request or a consideration, someone mentioned to me, one of the statements says liaison with city legal, economic development, and local social services agencies to address the needs of homeless subjects in the downtown corridor. And maybe that term subjects is, it could be considered a derogatory term as how it's used, and maybe just consider changing it, the needs of the homeless population in the downtown quarter. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then we have Councilmember Becker, Councilmember Emake, and we have only about ten minutes left, just to let you know.
I I will be very quick. Chief, thank you very much for your presentation and for all that you do. I'm gonna take a different tack, and I don't necessarily expect you to be able to answer this tonight. But I'm gonna say, what, if anything, is being done by the staff or the council that is limiting your ability to be effective? So tell us, you know, are are we preventing you from being effective? And then if there's a suggestion of specifically, hey, I need X to be more effective in executing this plan, you know, those are the two questions I have for you to really tell us how we can partner with you to be more effective in support of you. Thank you.
As this police chief here in the city of Bloomington, I I feel that I am, and the Police Department is very blessed to have a supportive city council as well as city manager, deputy city manager, and mayor. So I I feel the resources are, have been made available that my my boss is approachable so that we can make those proper strides. And the Bloomington Police Department is is in a very good place under great leadership. And I have nothing derogatory or negative to to speak to. We can carry out this this mission and and continue to grow. And I have nothing derogatory or negative to, to speak to. We can carry out this, this mission and, and continue to grow. We, our, our major struggle is, is recruiting, to be very honest, but it's one that. My peers share throughout the nation. Everyone is having a difficult time attracting talent. To serve in this, in this occupation and post. A lot of controversy that police departments have experienced, for instance. And it, it's not an attractable occupation. It takes someone with a, a great level of patience and interest in serving. The community under great scrutiny. And so we, we should be striving to try to overcome that. And I know we have the support of the city to do so. And I hope I, I answered your question, but as always, thanks for the support.
Thank you. Councilmember Emick, last but not least.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I really enjoyed learning about your strategic plan and I just want to, in particular applaud. The focus on youth and, and really targeting intervention strategies there. And I know you're familiar with restorative justice practices, but I was, when I moved here from Chicago, I was really impressed. With the, the level of implementation that they were starting to engage in at the local schools. So I. That reciprocal relationship between the community and the efforts of the police around. Really supporting our youth. I'm, I, I think it's a great opportunity. And that was just one intersection that I saw right away. And we, we had a, another relate, relationship back to what councillor Crebel was saying. About the traffic and the, the road diet, which I try to use whenever I can, that phrase. But we had a really interesting presentation to move towards Vision Zero by the Regional Planning Commission and. I'm no engineer either, but I think there's so much opportunity there as well to think, think about how we develop. Roads and planning and there were some excellent action steps identified. In that plan that, that might work incredibly well in tandem with the police's strategic plan. So I really do appreciate your time and leadership. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's, that is all we have. So thank you very much for a great presentation and for. Serving under sometimes a very difficult circumstances and a lot of scrutiny. But you, you all do it with grace, so it's definitely appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
So we're going to move on to item eight E, consideration and action to approve an agreement. As a sole source with Flock Safety with forty twenty-four month. Fixed annual cost to automatically renew each year contingent on approval in the annual budget. As requested by the police department. And I'm going to turn it over to. City manager Gleason for some initial comments and the chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a, an agenda item that was going to come before council a couple of meetings ago. But the direction was to present to the PSCRB. It was an opportunity for them to weigh in as a committee that was designed by the city. That's more than a courtesy, but was not a requirement. Tonight, one of the aldermen, I think it was Alderman Becker, asked what can be done to support the Bloomington Police Department? And it would be approving this resource as an additional tool so that the police department. Can further protect the community. We have Chief Simmington that has a presentation. I think crime and intelligence supervisor Jack McQueen. Is here to assist, Chief.
Thank you. It is a honor, privilege again to be before the city council and. To let you know that we feel that this goes towards one of our strategic goals. And that's leveraging technology to carry out our mission or to better. Assist us in carrying out our mission. We have the responsibility to serve and protect the most vulnerable. With that responsibility comes a responsible effort to pursue technology. Improvements which would greatly enhance our capability to effectively. And efficiently serve the entire city regardless of the socioeconomic status, race, color or other classifications. Every victim and their families deserve justice by the way of advanced, effective and responsible police services. We strive to do that. We have utilized the Flock LPR data proposal as a private. Public partnership. To allow us to do that. I will provide a couple of examples. Please go to the first slide. The Bloomington Police Department has utilized the Flock LPR data. From a partner agency to locate a suspect vehicle used in a November twenty twenty-one homicide. A team of six detectives have been searching for this vehicle on overtime. For approximately four hours without success. We utilize the LPR. Flock system. In a search that took fifteen seconds to locate the car that we were looking for in this homicide, which was located in, in another community. We also utilize LPR data from a Rockford, Illinois. Police Department search to eliminate a suspect from a March twenty twenty-one homicide. The search placed the car that the suspect was in, in that city. Therefore providing an alibi. Although he had surfaced as, as a premier suspect in that. Incident. Twenty eighteen, the Bloomington Police Department investigated homicide eight hundred block of West Jefferson. Those that were responsible for the murder had conducted pre-crime surveillance from a vehicle, then returned to that vehicle. After killing the suspect. I'm sorry, the, the victim, my apologies. The suspect vehicle was detected on our nearby public safety cameras during the crime multiple times. During the investigation, we had not only were able to identify the vehicle on video. We were in no way, I'm sorry, able to identify the vehicle with one hundred percent accuracy. An ALPR mounted in this area would have certainly changed things dramatically. We would have been able to identify the vehicle. Procure a plate. And ultimately solve the crime. Our inability to do so led to one of the suspects being shot during a shootout with three other men in a Decatur restaurant. And Bloomington Police Department responded to twenty-three shootings since September first of twenty twenty-two. And sixteen of those shootings based on our current placement. Of the proposed ALPRs would have collected suspect vehicle plate identification. We currently have eighteen public safety cameras that have been in use in this community since twenty twelve. They have been very instrumental in solving numerous crimes throughout this community. That technology has been used responsibly, meaning you will say that those cameras. Provide more information. Than the Flock system will, it will be able to in our investigations. Next slide, please. The Flock Falcon ALPR system takes a photo of the vehicle license plate and uses a machine learning technology to decode the image. Making it searchable for the vehicle's color, make, model and plate number. That data is then stored in a Amazon government cloud server. That is FBI Criminal Justice Information Services compliant. That information is encrypted and it's available on that server for thirty days only. At the thirty-first day, that information will fall off of the system and no longer be accessible. Only the data collected by the camera, which is based on alphanumeric characters are captured. No personal data, vehicle owner's information, their address, their race. Their age, their date of birth is not collected. If we generate a case based on a search, we will download the corresponding information. Into a criminal case and attach a case number to it. To ensure that we have tracking internally for auditing purposes. The Flock agreement does not allow us to use the data for traffic enforcement fines, towing or immigration enforcement. Next slide, please. The captured data from the Flock cameras automatically cross-indexed with the FBI. NCIC data for stolen vehicles, missing persons, silver alerts, those are lost elderly persons, amber alerts. Missing endangered youth. And it sends our police department. A hit when there is a match. We will limit the Flock information to major crimes. Those are homicides. Shootings, robberies, arson, sexual assaults, burglaries, aggravated battery, stolen cars, wanted subjects, et cetera. When hits are generated, we will require a validation process from a command officer. We will not immediately stop a vehicle based on, on a hit. There has to be a validation process that an officer would go through, that would be responsible and. Of course supervised by, by a command officer and all of this will be governed by our policy. We've presented a draft policy which has addressed many of the concerns of, of citizens. Community members, the ACLU and, and other interest groups. The policy we presented is. A lot more restrictive than any other communities that are using the Flock system. And some communities don't even have a policy. So we have been very responsible in that endeavor. Next slide, please. The data from our system can be shared at our discretion with regional law enforcement and agencies. We will vet the use of, of the data. We will track the use of what we share. We will not open. Bloomington Police Department's data to all the agencies in Illinois or, or beyond. We want to make sure we get that. This concept right and do so responsibly as is a concern for, for our citizens. At no time will data be shared with non-law enforcement groups or agencies. Our policy will require our agency conduct monthly audits internally. And then we will publish that usage and share it with the Public Safety Community Relations Board on a monthly basis. As for oversight with the use of our system. Next slide, please. We look at the Flock camera as a force multiplier. The cost is minimal compared to what. An officer's salary would be. For instance, if you deploy ten officers twenty-four hours a day. To monitor traffic at designated locations, the cost per day is, is in upwards of, of ten thousand dollars. This is a responsible. Fee to pay. The technology is a lot more cheaper than, than it ever has been. And the technology is advanced. From a comparisons perspective, the Illinois Department of Transportation or the tollway system. Utilizes ALPRs on the tollway system. The Illinois State Police in partnership with the Illinois Department of Transportation. Has deployed over one hundred cameras on the Chicago interstate system to help them investigate. Shootings that are, have been occurring on the interstate system. With the deployment of, of ten of these ALPRs, it is a fraction of, of what other communities are using and. We feel that we've been very responsible in sharing that with the community. For instance, we had a three-hour online question and answer forum. With community members, we have shared information through our. Social media. We've completed multiple press stories. We also presented this project to the City of Bloomington Technology Committee. The PSCRB and the West Side Neighborhood Association. Next slide, please. Okay, that's the end of the conclude, that concludes the presentation, I should say. And we're prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Sure. Well, let, first let's try to get a motion on the table. I know we've had extensive discussion about this. So is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this item, this proposed agreement as laid out in Agenda Item eighty.
I'll second that.
Second.
Okay, so motion by council member Montney, second by council member Bowlin, I believe. So is there, are there any other questions or?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. I know council member Montney, you still have your hand up. Electronically, wasn't sure if you're, okay, sounds good. Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So back in January, I moved to table this item so we could have a public, public input and, and in the involvement of our tech commission. The PSCRB, as you've mentioned, Chief. The reason is this is a big increase in the use of technology that will impact everybody in, in the community. We'll be gathering. Hundreds of thousands of license plates with only a few being relevant to, you know, crime investigation. And I think what happened was, you know, we, we could have been really efficient, passed it the first time, but I think sometimes. In government, things should not be efficient. We should stop and get community input. Especially from those volunteers on our boards of commissions to have a say. And I think that has been a positive for the department and, and for the community. And I think I listened to both meetings, the tech twice because there were some technical, it was a little difficult to understand. But I think, you know, Jack, you did a great job, Chief, as well. You were asked some tough questions, especially by the PSCRB. And you did a great job of, of answering them. My constituents, I asked them how they felt. And they had generally approved of the cameras, but others in the community, as you maybe have heard in public comment, have some concerns. With the technology. So, you, you know, I think the policy that you've taken a conservative approach, which I think is good. And you've done it in a responsible way, recognizing the privacy concerns. And so. And, and so what I'd like to do is make an amendment to the motion. And I've tried to take into consideration, you know, all that, you know, you've said, we've gone back and forth, Chief. You've answered lots of questions for me, which I, I appreciate. I've taken to mind, you know, the comments that, that, that Tim has shared with us. And I'm trying to do this in a way that's, that's, you know, reasonable and, and may get majority approval. So. My amendment that would be that we approve the purchase of the cameras. On the condition that the department considers certain things. And so. Some of the things that, like to say, the PSRB mentioned was that there were, you know. You both talked about this only applying to major crimes, right? But there's nothing specific in the policy on that. And then, you know, there was talk by the PSCRB that. You know, this be used as a crime-solving tool versus crime reduction. And then you heard some public comment about considering additional, maybe outside audit. So what, what I would propose as an amendment is that the department consider, consider. As a condition of passing this, that it consider and report back on possible changes to the policy. Based on public input, including providing further description of what kind of crimes will or will not be subject. Of the ALPR system while allowing for the flexibility the department needs. Adding that the use of the cameras as a crime-solving tool that may have crime reduction impacts. And that the department consider the need of an additional audit outside of the department. Another condition I would like, if, if there is any significant changes in the policy. Especially on use, collection, access, dissemination and retention, that council be notified. And that council be notified of any request to purchase additional AL, AL, ALPR cameras. Now, we'll vote on that amendment and if there's a second, and if, if the majority doesn't agree, that's good, we'll approve it. And if not, it shows there, that there's a majority that have some. And if not, it shows there that there's a majority that have some concerns about this thing. So, but.
I would like to.
Let's, let's, um.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to call for order of the day. The policy is not actually on the agenda for for any kind of vote. And if it's attached to an amendment, certainly not up for a vote.
Sure. And I was gonna ask the makers of the motion if they were and the second or who was the second or we had Montney and then?
I was.
Bowlin, okay. Are you okay with the amendment?
No.
No, okay.
No.
No, okay. So let's, let's go ahead and then we can just vote on this particular motion. And then if it doesn't, if it fails, then we'll move on to the next motion.
I'm sorry, Mayor, are you voting on the amendment or just the original motion?
I don't think, was there a second to the amendment?
I'll second it.
Is a second, okay. A second, okay. All right, sounds good. So is there?
Can I ask a procedural question? Can somebody rule on my objection? Or my, yeah, my point of order?
Well, what are you looking at the policy? Are you looking at the, actually, the?
Could I have Jeff rule on on these, on the, on the amendment to the motion? Is that within the order of the day? As far as we are not supposed to be voting on the policy? It's not on the agenda?
I think the mayor is trying to get some clarification on that, which I I also need to hear.
Yeah, so what are you looking to do, Jeff? Are you looking to vote on the contract? Or are you looking to 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 change the policy? Because right now we're trying to figure out the contract.
Right. And and my my motion and my amendment is that we approve the motion conditionally on the department considering these changes in the policy. So I do believe that's within what we are deciding because we are deciding on whether to approve the cameras. And we can decide whether we want to put conditions on that approval.
I think the go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead. No, go ahead, Jeff.
So I guess my question would be if, so this is to approve the contract.
Right.
And if you're making that contingent upon approval of the contract, there's no way for us, once we approve the contract, to then revoke that, depending on what the police department does. So are are you maybe rephrasing the motion as that you would also like to see them do this is is something, but I don't know that we can make the contract contingent upon that, if that makes sense.
May I say something that might shed a little bit of clarification? Would it be appropriate to ask for the the police chief to come back with the final policy? And report back on that to us?
Yeah.
Because that would indicate to us whether anything's been considered or not.
I think to me that would be appropriate for you to come back at some other point, you know, after we've approved this. I think it's fine. If I read what the PSCRB said, you know, they said for you to consider some of those, I think it was like four or five points that you have to consider.
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. So for clarification, are we to take it to the Public Safety, Public Safety Community Relations Board and the City Council?
No, that that's not what I'm saying. I mean, I, the the PSCRB says for you to consider those particular elements, which I'm assuming that you will because that was the outcome of the meeting, correct?
Yes, so that that is correct.
Go ahead.
Yes, so we will take it before the Public Safety Community Relations Board prior to bringing it before City Council. That's just a point of clarification. Speak to that.
May I clarify?
Okay, go ahead.
You know, and I think going off of what Councilmember Ward said, I think, you know, what we could do is to approve the original motion or vote, I'm sorry, vote on the original motion. And then we have an understanding that, and I think I think you're coming back to speak to us in March, if I understand right, and maybe address those concerns at that meeting with with the policy. Is that, would that be fair?
That sounds good to me.
I I will do whatever the board asks of me. I just wanted to.
Let's go ahead and do that then. Let's go ahead and do that. So let's vote on the motion.
Eric, are you gonna take comments?
Sure, we'll take comments. Good.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, the 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 big part of this, first of all, I really do appreciate the the presentation of the Technology Commission. I wrote and posted publicly after that that I felt like Jack had really knocked it out of the park and answered all the questions that the Tech Commission had. You know, when when it came to use and operations and stuff, there are still some things in the draft policy that I would like to see changed. And I think that those were mostly addressed by the PCSRB. So if we're coming back and we're gonna revisit this, I am perfectly happy to support the motion today. The other big thing that, a challenge for me is the fact that the contract auto-renews. And I want to be very.
Can you say that again, that the contract does what?
It auto-renews.
Oh, okay.
Now, the way the contract is written is that it's gonna auto-renew every two year or at every year at the end of the two-year initial contract. I want to make sure that we are having a conversation at City Council to talk about that before that contract auto-renews because I don't want this to end up in a budget line item and nobody ever thinks about it again. And I want to make sure we evaluate it to make sure it did what we intended to do, right? I I trust and support our police and I want to give them the tools they need to make a difference in the lives of residents. But let's talk about it and follow up in the future and make sure that it did what it was supposed to do. And if not, let's find a different solution and move on from there. So, thank you.
Right, but I, you know, from what I can see in the in the staff memo. So the flock safeties for two years with renewal contingent on council approval. So it it's not really an auto-renewal per se. I mean, it has to come back to council at some point.
Well, it says, it says auto-renew if it's in the budget, right?
Yeah, and also captured in the budget.
Yeah, so we know that there are things that have been renewed that get lost in a line item in a budget that any one of us might miss when we get down the road. And I I just want to make sure that we're adamant that we're gonna have a conversation about it, not just to get glossed over it in a budget presentation.
Yeah, I don't think this one will. Okay, Councilmember Crumpler.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be voting yes on to approve the agreement this evening. You know, I appreciate the extra time, you know, that we've had. I was able to reach out to members of Ward nine, who I represent. And the support, you know, for the flock cameras was was really a major support from the from the folks who live out here. And I gotta be honest, I I believe that there has been a thorough discussion, both at the tech, you know, commission, the PSCRB, community through social media and and tonight as well. And and I, I understand the concerns with language, you know, in the in the, you know, in the guidelines. But but I feel like that the Bloomington Police Department, you know, has responded to these discussions in a fair amount of detail. I'm satisfied with the level of accountability that's provided in that document. And I want to thank the the chief and his staff for putting together, you know, the guidelines that I think will help make these cameras effective in our community. So, thank you.
Okay. I think we have Councilmember Montney, Emig, and Bowlin. And then we're gonna vote after that. Oh, do you want something to say? Okay, all right. Do, would you like to say something before you go? Okay, all right. Councilmember Montney.
I just want to say thank you to the police department staff. It's been forty-eight days since we were asked to approve this and you've gone through hours and hours of presentations at four scheduled meetings and one that unfortunately couldn't take place. You've answered questions patiently. You've provided details. You've allowed people to weigh in on procedural matters that should be left to your profession, in in my judgment, for you to make the decision on procedural frameworks. We already have an accountability board that sets aside that for complaints from residents and so forth. Since this time has passed, our failure to fund police requests for technology that is used all over the state, all over the country, it's technology available in the private sector. Here in our community, we've had two additional homicides that have taken place since then that, to the best of my knowledge, have not been solved. And we've now learned of a missing, you know, body of a child that having technology like this could help solve. No one has said it will solve all these crimes, but it could help. It's another data point. And I was very struck by the public comment today about the three years that this mother has gone through, knowing now that technologies like this could have helped that process go smoother and more information be available sooner. I thank you for your patience with us and I certainly support funding you to appropriately address concerns in our community from a crime perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Emig.
Yeah, I'm unmuted. Thank you. And I just want to reiterate what everyone has said. The the police department has gone above and beyond. They have provided an enormous amount of information to us patiently and truly addressed the concern that that there be wide community input. So in that vein, I'm probably gonna be alone vote here. I will not vote yes this evening. Primarily because many of my constituents have continued to reach out to me and they do recognize the value of of safety and well-being and the compelling uses of the technology. But at the same time, even with the draft policy and curbs on use, there are still open questions about potential risks, consequences around transparency, precedent. If anything writ large, it has more to do with flock perhaps than our police department. So just to give voice to those who have been concerned about about the, just the larger question of how these data have come to light fast and furiously nationally and the potential for a problem. I want to acknowledge that that statement as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowlin. See, we are way past our time, so let's do.
Well, we kind of expected that. Anyway, where was I gonna go with this? Oh, yes. I understand the concerns. I read the policy. I think that the police department has, yes, gone way out of their way to answer all the problems, to address all the concerns. I believe that we should go ahead. I'm gonna be, well, I'm in favor of the the cameras for a lot of reasons. I I think that the policy is is acceptable. And if there is a problem with the policy or concerns moving forward, if something comes up in the next month or two after the cameras are put in place, then it goes through the process that we already have in place with this PSCRB. And the ordinance for that also says the PSCRB can come to the council and demand changes or recommend changes, I'm sorry. So I don't see rehashing and rediscovering unless the problem comes about considering this policy has been written and rewritten and gone over with a fine-tooth comb. I'm satisfied. And if there are problems, address them as they come up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, did you want to withdraw your amendment so we can vote? Okay.
I thought I did.
Okay, all right. And second. Is it okay with you? Okay.
Sorry, hold on, on one condition. Are we getting a commitment that this policy will be brought back to the council to give us information about it?
You want to answer that too?
Once it's finalized. That's all I want, is just to know what the policy is gonna be finally.
One thing that I I guess I'm not gonna ask for clarification, but as I direct staff to follow up on policy, when the policy is complete, it will be shared with this council.
And is that going to be made public beyond the council? It's not gonna be a, and just an internal thing?
It would be, but I want to confirm from the chief, what what is the expectation from the PSCRB regarding this policy? Or is it complete and you've already taken into consideration what they wanted us to consider?
Yes, city manager, we we have input the information based on their suggestions into the policy. The policy will be on the transparency dashboard and made available to the community like all of our other policies are for the Bloomington Police Department.
And that is exactly what I expected in the communication prior to the meeting with council. The policy is drafted. The policy has been written with a different consideration. If we get into, if this is approved tonight and we get into, like any policy, it's adaptable. The reporting back to council is one that, you know, you will see at a year-end report that we receive from the police department. And we know that this is a high-profile item and it will definitely will provide updates to council.
So just to clarify, it is not a draft policy. It is a finalized policy. I mean, it's been called a draft policy in the documents you showed us tonight, and it's been called a draft policy just now by the city manager, but it sounds like it's finalized. I just need clarity.
So with any policy within the police department, we have to go through a vetting process internally. The policy has to be staffed with the unions. So that step has not occurred yet. Once that occurs, then I can put my signature on it. There's agreement. And then the policy will be made public like we do with all of our other policies. We are very transparent in that effort.
Okay, okay, thank you. Definitely appreciate that. Madam Clerk, I think we're ready to call a vote.
Could, could you, what exactly are we voting on after all those?
Repeat the motion. We are voting to approve the contract as presented.
Okay, yes.
All right, awesome. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matthew.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Montney.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
No.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Urban.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Cravill.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the item passes and Madam Clerk, would you announce the name?
Councilmember Emig.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is our Finance Director's Report. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, end of the month, and we have the monthly finance.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. End of the month, and we have the monthly Finance Director's Report. Scott is going to go through this quickly, and I will as well with my City Manager discussion after that. Scott?
Thank you, City Manager. Yes, I will be brief. The message has not changed from last month, continued, continued positive trends in revenues. We haven't seen any tapering there. There are concerns with expenses, but we are managing those and eyeing those cautiously. So I, I will look just to make a comment or, or two per exhibit. Next slide, please. Thank you, sir. I just wanted to highlight the food and beverage line item here. You know, we're, we're eight months through the year so far. We have an eight-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-dollar positive year-to-date variance. When you look out to the far right, you can see that we took the budget down by five-hundred-seventy-five-thousand dollars. So even though we're only eight months through the year, we've surpassed any differences in the, in the reduction. I wanna acknowledge, you know, comments been made that, you know, related to our tax revenues, you know, a positive for the city might not necessarily translate to a positive for the community. It's kind of one of those double-edged swords. People are potentially paying more for inflation. Some of that is resulting in higher sales taxes for us. But from the standpoint of the financials for the city, we are faring well at this point in time. At the very bottom, I wanna highlight that the year-to-date variance for this group of, uh, major tax revenues is eleven-point-one million, and that will be, come apparently why it's important here in just a moment. Next slide, please. So we always review the general fund, as I mentioned during the budget presentation. It's the largest fund is impacted the most from economic variances, so it, it kinda garners the most attention. I just wanted to highlight the, the, we have a projection column in here now with the projected year-end. We, we started that last month. Once we get, you know, mostly through the year, we start updating the projections. We have that, that taxes line where we've projected to come in seventeen million dollars over budget. Of course, we took twenty-twenty-two down somewhat, but I'm just wanted to reference the previous slide, how we're eleven-point-one million dollars over year-to-date. And seventeen million dollars projected for year-end, year-to-date, where we're reflecting about eight months. So we are tracking with that projection. Our Budget Manager meets with all, well, let me go to expenditures first before I launch into that. Next slide, please. The same setup as far as what we're providing for financial information now with projection. We have a budget adjustments column, and that drives kind of our projected year, year-end totals. Our, our Budget Manager meets with departments at least quarterly, sends out the reports monthly. He's added the projection column on their reports, so that we're monitoring these expenditures as inflation goes up. For right now, just kind of highlighting the revised budget column, the very first column. The capital expenditures, you can see that it shows three-point-seven million. We started the year at six-hundred thousand. Council approved a budget amendment to pay cash for equipment for the current fiscal year. So, again, reflecting how we're trying to report to the community changes in, in our, in our process. That strategic initiative, very fortunate tax revenues, and the way we finished twenty-one allowed us to do that. Otherwise, the, the far-right column down at the bottom, we're currently projecting a, a year-end reserve of about thirty-four-point-five million dollars. That is materially unchanged from last month. Next slide, please. Enterprise funds, key data points here is the very bottom line, the revenue trend. You know, we are seventy-five percent of the fiscal year. These revenues for the enterprise funds usually track pretty closely to the trend. I mean, we, we may have consumption increases like in water, et cetera, but you can see that we're, we're trending right with the calculated trend or above, except for the arena, which, as, as everyone knows, was impacted dramatically from COVID. The second thing I'll highlight here is the solid waste column. I think it was the October financial report. Councilmember Bolin asked, you know, about the large year-to-date loss we were showing. Well, those are commitments, those POs, that's encumbrances, that line. When we, we sign the contracts for landfills, et cetera, we reflect that immediately. So back in October, we had a showed seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar year-to-date loss, and you can see it's come down to two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars because we're progressing through the year, recognizing revenues, even though we, we recognize those expenditures, those encumbrances right out of the gate. So those are really all the comments I wanted to make for the evening. Again, revenues are, are trending. Next slide, though, please, Phil. Revenue, revenues are trending. Expenses, we are concerned, but we are managing those. To date, wanna highlight to the community, these reports can be found at that address online, documents, finance, documents, budget, monthly budget, and finance director reports. And that is all for the presentation for this evening. Any questions, comments?
Council, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our City Managers' Discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll go through these very quickly. First Friday event downtown is not this, yeah, it is this Friday, five to eight PM, celebrating female entrepreneurs. Next slide. New employees. We have a handful of police officers, Dakota DeMoss, Trey Jones, Nicholas Hines, and then with the police support staff, Dean Mueller, and then Alyssa Pemberton with Economic Community Development. She actually, I believe, comes from Rockford. Excited about that hire. Matthew Barber, also support staff for Economic Community Development. I know we've had a busy month. Is that it on new employees, Phil? All right, is that the end of the slides? Couple of other items, as everybody's aware, Governor's Order, the CDC recommendations. Today is the first day where masks are not being worn within City Hall, city facilities, and around the community. But we do have the ability in some circumstances that that could be a requirement. And one of those possible examples would be the zoo and enclosed areas where the determination is that's for the safety of the zoo animals. Something else I wanted to share that effective in March, our first meeting, council meeting is March fourteenth. All council meetings, boards and commissions will be backed in person. Wanted to share that with the community. And then also just an update on a couple of agenda items that are coming up on the fourteenth. We have the FY twenty-three proposed budget that Finance Director Scott Rathbun just shared. Also, we're going to have our presentation that was bumped a month from February to twenty-one accomplishments for the city and remembrance for a couple of employees that passed away in twenty-twenty-one. Again, moved that one month just because of some heavier agendas that we had in February. And then also, as promised prior to the budget, FY twenty-three budget presentation, last council meeting, when Public Works Director Kevin Cothe was commenting to the projects, there were a few council members, and I know everyone was interested in this question of staff. And just quickly reporting, more detail will come at some point. Capacity for the, the prime row construction to do more work, and the answer is yes. What is the rating, uh, rating policy or practice that we have as a community regarding the roads? And it's called decision optimization technology. And if you fall anywhere between a six and a seven-point-nine percent, that rating puts us in a good rate. We fall at a six-point-three. The projection is that in five years, we will drop to a six-point-one. So with what I believe is a desire, a strong desire from council, and I know that I need to provide more information, I'm just going through this very quickly tonight. We can add additional dollars possibly to try to maintain that six-point-three and possibly even improve the overall rating. Also to consider, when we're talking about asphalt and concrete for the roads, a different type of road repairs or resurfacing that we do, there's likely always going to be a sidewalk component to this. So the very, very rough numbers that we're throwing out is possibly an additional one-point-seven-five million dollars. And we are looking to find the revenue stream for that in FY twenty-four, not FY twenty-three, hoping that when we take up this council discussion further, we might consider for Construction Twenty-three, the ARP funds, because we can let a second contract to do some additional roadwork in this construction season. I know I covered that very quickly, intended to take a little bit more time, but we've had a long evening. I'm gonna turn it back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Under Mayor's discussion, not a whole lot, just a, just an FY that the One Voice trip is happening. It is happening starting tomorrow. However, at the time that it was being considered, we were unsure whether or not we could be in person. So at this point, you know, we have elected not to go, but we will attend a couple of virtual meetings in the next, you know, I think, I believe on Wednesday, I think that's when the virtual meetings are. So that is all I have, and let's move on to council discussion. Is everybody ready to go home? Seems.
Mayor, I do have something.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Sorry, it, it's February twenty-eighth, the last day of Black History Month. And, and why do we celebrate Black History Month? Because Black history is so often met, ignored, or suppressed. We dedicate a month to bring light the facts that our country wouldn't be what it is today without the involvement and accomplishments of Black Americans. I wanna address another part of Black history, one that doesn't get mentioned as much. That is a failure of America to provide reparations for what has been taken away from Black Americans for more than four hundred years. History of that, let's start with slavery. Black Americans were never paid for the labor and torture they suffered during the hundreds of years of slavery. A promise of one acre or forty acres of new mule was not kept. That alone is worth trillions in today's dollars. After slavery, Jim Crow laws were enacted and creating a reign of terror, debt pionage, and destroying of any wealth that Black Americans accumulated. The Depression was hard on everyone, but especially hard on Black Americans who were intentionally excluded from most New Deal benefits. After World War Two, the GI Bill helped in obtaining an education and buying home, both of which led to wealth accumulation, but Black Americans were mostly denied this benefit. From the nineteen-thirties to the sixties, they were denied mortgages. These are just examples. If you argue the reparations are not needed because of the same type of discrimination no longer exists, would be saying something like, I stole your car. I promised not to steal another car from you, but you never returned the original car that you stole. That's not justice. That's what has resulted in a wealth disparity of up to thirteen to one between white and black families even in this community. We need to look at all forms of government to address this problem, whether that's nationally with the bill in front of Congress now to create a commission on reparations, or at the state level like equity provisions or, and the cannabis laws, or locally, where that's investment in a community or in investment individuals. We need to have that discussion as a community. I'm not gonna submit it initiative. I know we don't wanna do that. But I believe these discussions are within the purview of the Human Relations Commission, who can look at history, keep track of investments that benefit persons of color, and propose new ideas. Just as examples, as we know, the West Side is an area that has seen disinvestment for fifty years. We are starting to make these types of investments, such as O'Neill Park, creating a directory of minority-owned businesses, and investing in nonprofits on the West Side. Even something we heard tonight, like Heartland Work, Workforce Equity, and even Jamie's initiative in providing incentives to fix houses in the downtown and nearby areas. I'm wearing a Black Lives Matter t-shirt under my city pullover because I didn't wanna get in trouble. The Black Lives Matter movement arises from hundreds of years of Black lives not mattering. Yes, we can say Black lives matter, but will they really matter until we pay for what's been taken from them? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we do not have any executive session, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bolin, second by Councilmember Becker, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.